Alright, everyone could settle in, we're gonna begin our regular meeting.
People in here, people who are here at home.
We should make everyone just scoot forward.
Yeah, if everybody here would be so kind to physically scoop forward, it's technological wizardry, but you'll be able to hear better. And also, if anybody would like any hearing devices, if you're hard of hearing, we do have those available too. But for now, if you'd be so kind to just scoot forward, it should be acoustic.
And everyone try and speak up.
Thank you.
Don't shout. Alright, let's call this a regular meeting of April 9th. Board size township board of trustees to order. We'll begin with the roll call and then the pledge of allegiance.
Hathaway?
President.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff, present, Brazil?
Yes, present.
Carey? Absent. Noel?
Present.
Riser?
Present.
We have Quorum.
Thank you, please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation on the ground.
Thank you, for those joining us, we, at this point, we are running a little behind this evening because our, we had a special meeting preceding this regular meeting and it ran over a little bit, so please bear with us. First item is the adoption of the agenda, there was a request to shift the report under H2 of the Transit Advisory Committee and the related action item, which is J8 under New Business, so that they are together. So the suggestion is to move H2 to the top of New Business and then J8 move that up so that it follows immediately after H2. Are there any other, oh, and one other comment, there's, under reports, there's a separate item for the code enforcement report, that's, it should have just been put in under the regular reports as a written report. So there won't be any kind of presentation for that item. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Anything related to the special meeting? The, what you mentioned earlier about fire item?
Oh, that item will be, will be discussed under reports, just in general.
Joyce will address that under reports, the township manager. Are there any other suggested modifications? In that case, someone prepared to move the adoption of the agenda?
I would move it's adoption.
Awesome.
So moved by risers, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Communications to the board of trustees.
Uh, yeah, one communication, I would just note that this matter is being worked on by our fire chief and code enforcement officer.
Okay. In that case, that brings us to public comment. This is time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the board of trustees. We hear first from those who are present and then return those who are participating remotely. Each speaker has up to three minutes and trustee Brazil, will you serve as our trustee? Thank you. Thank you, please approach the table if you have a public comment.
I'm still David Reed and I'm still in Sia Township. I just have a comment, I understand, I read in the agenda that there's a possible resolution for discussion about perhaps letting folks put beehives on, I think it's part of the West Sia Preserve, one of the parcels of the West Sia Preserve. Now, I'm a great supporter of bees, we need bees, it's critical. I have two hives on my property, there are four hives on one of my neighbor's properties. We have bees in the neighborhood, very critical. I have great concern about using, about allowing this use on the public property. We have, to my knowledge, we have no policy or procedure on what we can and can't do on the preserves that we buy, other than I think there's some general statement about passive, passive activities, hiking, photography, nature, nature study, that type of thing. But there's no, you can do this and you can't do that type of thing. So I think before we go down this road, which, you know, it might be a good idea to allow bees there because it is a, I think that could be considered a passive activity and I think it's also good for the environment, it's good for the residents. But before we do that, I think we need to have a clear, defined policy for what we can do on the preserves and this may be part of it and that might be fine. But if we do this without a policy, next week somebody's gonna wanna have a pig farm on preserve that's across the street from them or, or have cows on the property across the street from them. So I think it's really important that we have a policy before we do this. I'm not necessarily against it, although I think, I think the resolution calls for moving the hives in the middle of winter, which I think would be a terrible idea because I think that would disturb the bees and possibly kill them. But I don't know that, I'm not an expert. But I do know, I think that would be a mistake, but before we do this, we should be real careful.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Good evening, Kathleen Grant, I just had something real quick, that's why I'm not even sitting down. In the payment of the bills, there's an item for our, was our network provider, I think it's called NetSmart, something like that. So why, why are we still having those bills? I thought that was gonna be eliminated by having our own IT director. So if you could answer that, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
I'm gonna speak under the microphone, I hope that's gonna make a difference. Oh, it is. Good evening, Pat Stein, Sia Township, long time resident. The events known as Sheriff Gate that began six months ago and is still being discussed tonight at a special meeting reminds me of the children's story, The Emperor Who Wore No Clothes. In my version of the story, the emperor, of course, would be Supervisor Hathaway. Not an emperor in the sense that he's a leader always looking out for the well-being of his subject. His subjects in this fractured fairy tale, Emperor Hathaway's being manipulated and groomed by his hammers, not the weavers. Pretty much everyone knows who I'm referring to. So these hammers appeal to Hathaway's ego, making him believe that he can do no wrong because they will protect him and if he follows their explicit instructions, Sia will be their dream township, the most developed township of all the land. The reference to the emperor not wearing any clothes is not suggesting that Emperor Hathaway appears in public lacking any clothing, no. It's reference to Supervisor Hathaway's lack of accountability. Since November, members of this board have spent hours strategizing, spending taxpayers' dollars and staff's valuable time paying for an investigation by a reputable company, a reputable company who has given too little, too late to provide a concrete explanation as to the series of events that took place those many months ago. We all know what happened, Mr. Hathaway's history shows us what clearly took place. You know that I'm not one to mince words, so let me spell it out for you. Supervisor Hathaway made a mistake, a simple mistake by failing to log out of his email account when he last used the public computer. A simple mistake that could have been dismissed with a simple apology to those who were using the public computer to set up a meeting on Zoom. But no, Supervisor Hathaway does not make mistakes. He does not apologize for his mistakes either, instead he blames others. But in this case, he didn't place the blame on the two people accessing the public computer. Ian and Jillian, nope, he put the blame on only one of the two people, the woman. And not just any woman, trustee Jillian Carey, his adversary. And he just, didn't just blame her, nope again. He ran to the sheriff's office accusing Ms. Carey of hacking his email. And a sheriff deputy, hearing this accusation directly from the supervisor of Sia Township, the township that has a signed contract with the sheriff's department, took immediate steps to address this claim. The false claim led to a sheriff knocking on the door of Ms. Carey's home after dark on a Sunday night to question her about hacking the supervisor emails. We all know this absolution, or excuse me, this accusation is totally bogus. This convoluted process was put in place for the sole purpose of Supervisor Hathaway not wanting to admit he made a mistake by failing to log out of his email account when he last used the public computer. All you had to do is apologize. So I ask you, members of the board, you hold, will you hold Supervisor Hathaway accountable for the resulting cost to the taxpayers? Will he be held accountable for turning his mistake into a political opportunity and smearing his advisory? Will he be held accountable by the authorities for following a false police report? And finally, will you be reimbursing Jillian Carey for her attorney's fees because of a false accusation from your mom?
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Please come up.
Yeah, Paula Globerson, resident since 1986, I believe. Um, I've done a lot of things with township. Unfortunately, now, with this particular supervisor, I've had, many of us have to watch every meeting now that they're on Sia Community News. Now, there's other more dysfunctional, Ottawa County, they were, the taxpayers were paying for somebody to come in and check the managers, see if there's any bugging devices. So we're not the most dysfunctional, but this has been extremely dysfunctional. And I wanna say something to you, John. My grandmother used to say this, she was a wealth of information and pearls of wisdom. When you lie down with dogs, you're gonna get up with police. And, and you know what? A lot of people have done a lot of good things in here. You have been more divisive, Will Hathaway, in this community than anyone else that I have ever seen in all the years that I've participated. Charles Yelman had more integrity than you when I dealt with him for years and years. And I hope everyone gets on neighborhood or get the information out why we cannot have this individual ever again as trustee, supervisor, or even on a committee. He has no ethical bones in his body.
Thank you, Paula.
Who's next? If there's no one else present who wishes to speak during public comment, let's turn to those who are participating remotely.
Sure, first up, please raise your hand, first up is Pam Boyd, followed by Jonathan, Pam. Pam Boyd, you're up.
Okay, there, I'm unmuted. Pam Boyd, Sia Community Newsletter, Sia Community News YouTube channel for anyone who wants to go and listen to these meetings that have been recorded. The six o'clock meeting, Supervisor Hathaway, Rob was right, you really should resign. This, this meeting at six o'clock was a pinnacle of your inability to work with your board. You make decisions when they should come before the board, board body first. You are so disrespectful to your fellow female board members, I, I'm appalled. So many issues, you have spent so much township monies like it's your own right as an individual to do so. You have stepped out of line too many times, you do need to resign. Oh, and where is that list of priorities for this last couple of months to accomplish for this board? Still not a priority, I suppose? And treasurer Palmer? Please. I expect you to call out the supervisor when he attacks the fellow women on this board. You have been here for 30 years. You know better. You, but it, it has been proven by how you voted that you will kiss his feet. Stop it, stop bowing down to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Jonathan Greenberg, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Sia Township president. In tonight's OHM report, Aubrey's Grove is waiting for an easement pending from the, from the condo association. So our, so our Park Ridge neighbors need to know that that Aubrey's, that ridiculous Aubrey's Grove project is still trying to push forward. Our code enforcement officer in this report finally let us know a smidge of information. We now know that there were 56 reports to GFL in the month, month of March. There were six reports to both, there were six reports to Sia Township alone and there were four reports to both Sia Township and GFL. If you extrapolate that ratio to, and, and there, so far, we've got no information from GFL about how many reports have been made to them over the past couple of years. They've refused to provide that information and now I think I know why. If you extrapolate that ratio to the, the GFL reports to Sia Township, that's 432 last year, up until last October. And you multiply that by that ratio, that's 2,333 reports that were made to GFL under that ratio. So clearly, GFL has had thousands, literally thousands of reports and they're refusing to provide that information because it makes them look bad. Their utilities report, thank you to utilities director, our utilities director, that is an outstanding report tonight, it's eight pages of text, 13 pictures that help describe that. I wish our supervisor and our treasurer could take a lesson from that and actually provide written reports, number one, but also complete reports in the same manner. In tonight's agenda packet, the 7970 property, the contact information for whoever is bidding on the property has been redacted, could you tell us why? And then I'll repeat again, Supervisor Hathaway knew for months that the investigation was over and didn't tell anyone and this board should demand an explanation. And when I say demand an explanation, I'm speaking to you trustee Riser. I'm speaking to you trustee Brazil. I'm speaking to you trustee Noel and I'm speaking to you clerk Flintoff. Each of you individually and collectively should demand an explanation for why this supervisor is acting independent of this board. A general law township, the supervisor is part of a group, not an independent mayor. You need to hold this supervisor responsible and demand an explanation. And I, again, I say you should resign and you should resign in shame and you should resign tonight.
Thanks, Rob. Jonathan, you're up next.
Thank you, Rob, Jonathan. I'm muted.
Alright, thanks a lot, hey, read the packet, really some good stuff. Interested in commenting on David Reed's earlier comments about the beekeeping, I think that's a great step forward. I think we do need to move with precision and make sure that we take into account the various issues. I think one solution would be that nobody could, you could raise anything on any public lands if it's bigger than a walnut. Because then the whole pig and cow thing right out. Also, I'd like to answer a couple of questions that were asked earlier. The answer is no, 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 and no. Will isn't gonna do anything, the board isn't going to hold him accountable. He's not gonna pay back the taxpayers for the tens of thousands or thousands of dollars or teens of thousands of dollars spent on this worthless investigation that, that Will weaponized in order to attack a fellow, fellow trustee. We're not gonna see Donna ever behave with any ethics towards her fellow female township folks. And more importantly, we're not gonna ever get to the bottom of Sheriff Gate because what Will and will do is continue to, you know, wishy washy back and forth. And without a deep investigation into his timing and how he went about this, without the sheriff cooperating, without anyone being interested in holding him accountable, nothing will happen, just like it has in the past. It's unfortunate, but we do have a chance this August to change things. And so I urge anyone listening to this message, anyone listening to this meeting, to vote for residents who are for residents, not residents who are for developers and other big businesses within the township. Please, folks, we gotta get the right people in office next time, we can do that in August, not November, it's August. We've gotta get rid of these idiots now, in August. Stay tuned, thanks, everyone.
Jonathan, who's next?
I see no others in the hands.
Alright, let's move on to approval of minutes.
I just had one response.
Oh, right, sorry, you did wanna respond.
To Kathleen's question about the invoice, I've talked with Chris Bailey about it and I would defer to him to give maybe a more formal response, but the short story is, the transition has taken much longer than I expected, not being an expert in this. But when Chris has explained it to me, it's all these contingencies about getting the network up to date, which is almost done, the servers, and then one by one, we'll be removing those services, but there is a plan to do that. It's just taking a little longer than I expected.
Any further comments in response to public comments? Let's move on then to approval of minutes, first is the special meeting of March 19th. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, is someone prepared to move the draft minutes for approval? Moved by Noel, support, support by Riser, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? The special meeting minutes of March 19th are approved. The next set of minutes are from the regular meeting of March 19th. Are there any corrections to those minutes? I have one, page six of the minutes, under supervisor report, I would just like to, to replace the word request with proposal. I think that's a more accurate description of what we're putting on the ballot.
Got it.
Any other corrections? If not, is someone, someone prepared to move the minutes?
As amended.
As amended. Moved by Brazil, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Those minutes are approved. Brings us to the consent agenda. Is someone prepared to move the consent agenda? That are yes?
I would move.
Move to John Riser.
Support.
Support by Flintoff, please call a roll.
Starting tonight with Noel, Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brazil? Consent agenda adopted six to zero.
Thank you, that brings us to the awards. And first is the presentation by the Daughters of American Revolution on the Popkins Burial Grounds on Pratt Road.
Great, so we have a few guests here for a brief report and questions, please come forward, I wanna thank you for being here. Briefly, as a reminder, the board approved an agreement with the Daughters and Sons of the American Revolution to help clean up Popkin Cemetery on Pratt Road. We've enlisted the Helpful Guardian Tree Company, I'm happy to say that they're pro bono, gonna trim some trees for us and I wanna turn it over to the volunteers to share a little bit about the cemetery. Thank you for being here, if you could start with introductions.
I'm Elizabeth Keller, I'm the region of the Ypsilanti chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution.
My name is Lauren Smith, I'm the region of the Sarah Caswell Angel chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, out of Ann Arbor.
I'm Phil Jackson of the Sons of the American Revolution and I'm not a daughter.
We, a little bit of background is that the Michigan Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, is putting together a document of all known American Revolutionary War patriots buried in the state of Michigan. And two years ago, it was requested that the local chapters gather this information and share it with the state organization. The patriots being identified have a member in the DAR who has proven their lineage to an American Revolutionary Patriot. Moving forward, the DAR along with the Sons of the American Revolution, the American 250 Organization and other patriotic organizations are overseeing and planning and preparing for the 250th anniversary of the United States on July 4th, 2026. It's our goal to have all patriot graves marked throughout the period and beyond while the 250th anniversary of the United States is recognized. In Washtenaw County, the Huron Valley Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, the Sarah Caswell Angel Chapter, the Ypsilanti Chapter are working together to mark the graves of these patriots. There are 17 of the associated patriot graves that have been located in Washtenaw County. One of those graves is in Popkin Cemetery. Popkin Cemetery is one of the earliest cemeteries in Sia Township with its first burial in 1832 of a Revolutionary War veteran Sylvester Richmond. Sylvester Richmond, who was born in New York, served as a scout in the American Revolutionary Army. There are 13 people that are buried in this cemetery. The Popkins family, John and his wife Margaret Popkins, had left everything familiar to them and set off towards the unknown in search of a better life. They traveled on a sailing ship for 21 days to Albany, New York and where the Erie Canal had just been completed. They came down the canal and ship bound for Detroit and James Popkin purchased the 160 acres in section 14 of Sia Township on February 27th, 22nd, 1826. The family likely purchased a horse and wagon to get them and their belongings to their new property. James was not a farmer, but learned how to farm and became successful. Sylvester Richmond and his three sons arrived in the area in November 1827 and had not purchased land yet. It was typical for those who did not own land to work for those that did until they saved up enough money to purchase their own. Sylvester Richmond died six years after arriving and James Popkin allowed him to be buried in his family burial plot. It can be assumed there was a friendly connection there. And so, that's a little bit of the background of why this is so important to preserve and rehabilitate this particular cemetery. Its historic significance is great for your township and for us as Daughters of the American Revolution and Sons of the American Revolution to honor those American Revolutionary War patriots. Phil is gonna talk a little bit about what we're planning to do at the cemetery.
Yeah, I guess I've been a little bit more of the hands-on, out there digging around and poking and probing and just kinda getting my head around everything out there. So we have been in touch with a gentleman, Paul Schwimmer, who's with the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency and he volunteers his time to go around the world and search out remains for POWs and MIA's. He's gonna help us locate graves and also been in touch with Justin Frost with Past Preservation LLC who is gonna help us with restoring the headstones, which my count is there's about seven of them out there, the rest are missing and most all of them are broken and it's, it's quite a, quite a mess. We do have an Eagle Scout who's doing an Eagle Scout project out there, who will be extending the path around there. He's gonna build a structure, an entrance feature, an archer. We don't really have a design of it yet, we'll see what he's signed to go with it. And he's also gonna supervise the cleanup, which is May 4th, from 10 to 2. And which kinda gets me to another problem that problem that we have. I'm just, okay, if I come up and pass out some pictures, um, but you'll notice from these, these, uh, pictures, there's quite a lot of wood on that piece of property. And, uh, our objective on May fourth is to haul out what we can, um, probably pile it by the, by the road. Maybe a fire would be the best way of getting rid of it, but we don't have access to water and, uh,
Thank you very much.
Um, we'd really appreciate helping the township in getting rid of, uh, all this wood that we're generating. So I don't know if that's possible, but, um, we're asking. And, um, we do want to thank you for approving us to be able to do this and also to, um, get word out in the newsletter. We're getting a lot of response from neighbors and, um, people that want to help on May fourth, so.
Thank you. And, and to be clear, um, Guardian Tree Company has committed to doing, um, some of the tree work and hauling it away pro bono. So, um, hopefully that will, the plan is that that will be done before the May fourth cleanup, the big stuff at least, so.
So we're, on the cleanup on May fourth, we're gonna be generating a lot of rush, so we're gonna have to come up with some plan to get rid of that stuff.
Um, I encourage everybody to come out if you can. Um, any other questions about it?
Well, did Laura, did you have something to add?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to mention that we have set up a Facebook page to connect to people in the area about what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what good it is for the community and for us going into the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our country. Also, an email has been established for communication. I understand six neighbors so far have come forward and expressed an interest in helping out. And the Boy Scout who's working on his Eagle project has put in a good amount of time and is trying to quantify his portion of our larger vision, and he's got supervision and management plans of that fundraising and so forth he's responsible for. And then our scope is beyond that. You know, he will work on the path, the trail, the sign. Ours is the whole area, maybe a fence, maybe a wall, you know, whatever. A lot to be determined, um, but we're looking to, um, spruce up the area and maybe leave the, uh, uh, area where the, um, grave sites are in, in better shape and a place that could be revered. Thank you for your time.
If people were trying to find that Facebook page, they'd just look for Popkins or?
Friends of.
Friends of Popkins Cemetery.
Friends of Popkins Cemetery. Okay, thanks.
And the email address is preservationtwo fifty at iCloud dot com.
Are there any other questions that you have for us?
Yes. I have one. I, I see where it says it's located near Honey Creek. And I'm trying to visualize where that crosses Pratt Road. Does it cross Pratt Road or they just?
It's where Honey Creek ends into Pratt Road.
Honey Creek does cross Pratt Road. Honey Creek Drive.
Okay.
Creek does go underneath, uh, Pratt Road, but further west.
Okay. I know the area. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
So thanks again for your support and for having us here, so.
Thank you for all your work. Thanks for being here tonight.
So we're, we're moving to H three. This is the utility director's report. It's, are you telling your director? Oh, there he is.
I think, uh, he was going to, uh, try to answer any questions that board might have related to the project.
Yes, yep. Well, are there questions related to the report? Some really icky-looking pictures, I have to say.
If you get them in color, yeah, they're quite, quite interesting to look at.
Yeah, I just generally had a question, Brandon. It looks like you've done, um, you and Kevin have done some good work to kind of shift away from some of the contracted services for the building maintenance regarding, you know, HVAC or mowing, plowing, different things. Can you talk a little bit about how that's going and if you think that's going to be sustainable to continue to handle that stuff in-house?
Um, yes, I think we can continue to hire people that are capable of doing that work, uh, now, especially with Kevin and going forward. Um.
Thanks for shutting that door, Chris.
Um, we definitely have staff capable and the vehicles capable of, of plowing and maintaining our own buildings, uh, when need be. As far as the mowing goes, um, tonight's on the agenda is for us to get a mower and a utility trailer so that we can do that as well. That will save some money. Um, and then also taking some of the HVAC, uh, maintenance plan away was, um, I think a good idea as well. We were getting ready to pay eight thousand dollars. Um, and when me and Kevin and Joyce looked at it, particularly me and Kevin, um, we realized that really all they were doing was coming here and changing out the filters. Uh, none of the other work was included as far as inspecting it. If we wanted them to inspect it, we were paying a hourly rate for them to come. So, you know, Kevin was capable of changing out the filters. He knew exactly where to call to get the right sizes and got them ordered in, and he installed the last round of filters that needed to be updated. Um, and I think that was a, a good, a good move on our end because it did save eight thousand dollars and it was projected. It was a, we had three more years on the contract, and each year it was going up by a couple hundred dollars, so, um, that was definitely a, a good move, I believe.
Further questions? Thank you. Still, thanks. All right, that brings us to our regular reports. See, we have, I, the, the thing, some of the things that I've been working on are actually on the agenda later on, so I won't, um, go into great detail about that. Um, I would like to turn to the treasurer, though, and see if she has anything to report.
Well, the last of the bank statements came in today, so the quarterly report that I'm required to give will be at the last meeting of this month for the final quarter of last fiscal year. And that's.
Thank you. Um, clerk?
Um, yeah, no big report. I just say I went to an excellent election security training. It was the first of its kind in Michigan, collaboration with, um, you know, everybody from DEA, FBI, Homeland Security, and all the clerks throughout the entire state. So I was, um, encouraged to see, um, how proactive, um, the state is being, um, for the, um, evolving threats that are evolving, but, um, it, it allowed me to get a lot of good information. I went along with two colleague, um, partners over at the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office as well as our Washtenaw County clerk. So we were well represented and came back with a lot of ideas and a lot of work to get ready.
And is there anything of note from the Lockout on Santa Trudy Authority?
Um, yeah, just to note, a longtime chair and former Siouxsia resident Dave Navar stepped down as, um, chair and from, um, the Lockout Plan Improvement Association representative. Um, so we have a new representative and the new chair is Supervisor John Kingsley. We've done some good work, um, with the accounts manager at LASSA, um, the Woodville Group, consolidating the accounts and getting a better interest rate, um, which is particularly important. We're looking at necessarily needing to raise rates potentially in the future. So things are going well there.
Great. Parks, Paths, and Preserves Committee, Trust, Trustee.
We're gonna be meeting, um, this week as this LPC, and I will report back at, at our next meeting with the results of those meetings. And Planning Commission meeting that last night, and they approved a conditional use permit to allow retail operations for a flower, um, University, I want to say University Flowers. There's a flower store in, on U of M's campus, Nichols Arcade, and they have, right, they're gonna have operations out here, but, uh, the Planning Commission voted to recommend, it's not, it's this court's call, that they allow to have a conditional use permit. The other thing was, uh, something they were thankful to, uh, uh, Attorney Brian Fainforth is the upgrading, upgrading, updating, maybe both, but there are the, the bylaws for the Planning Commission to get it, something to come back. So I wasn't, I was in Ohio, but I listened to the meeting and I'm reporting back, uh, what I listened to over the airwaves.
Thank you. Land Preservation.
We, I, I said.
Oh, you've said that too. All right, sorry.
I can say it a third time. We're gonna be, you know.
Thank you. Sorry, I just didn't catch that one. All right, Gelman?
Yes, so the public comment period for placement of the Gelman site on the National Priorities List, the NPL. It, it has to be listed first in the federal register. The public comment period will close on May sixth. There is a link to the appropriate site at the EPA for placing public comments on the Gelman page on the Siouxsia website. If anybody wants to go to it, please consider posting a comment if you have dioxin contamination in your drinking water well, if you live near what is thought to be the perimeter of the plume. Um, and even if you are municipal water, but have concerns about the city of Ann Arbor water supply, please consider making a comment on this issue. Uh, Siouxsia Township will be filing comments. We are looking at our options right now and planning with our attorney, Bill Stapleton and Keith Gadway. We'll be meeting soon to discuss it in more detail. And also in your packet, I included the December twenty twenty resolution from the Siou board rejecting the Fourth Amendment consent judgment and renewing our affirmation of the petition for the Gelman site to be designated as a superfund site. I just put it in the packet for historical purposes so people could understand where we had been in the past. We have three new trustees on the board who were not on the board at that time when this all evolved. Also, I included a recent email from Dan Bignell, who has done some consulting for the township on Gelman issues, and it gives a general overview of the public comment process for the EPA. So those are in your packet.
And I'd also like to point out that you wrote a very thorough, uh, article for people to understand this process and the issues behind it and, and the need for people to, uh, um, comment before May sixth, if that's in, um, our, uh, current newsletter for the township. So if you, um, have that in your pile of mail at home, pull it out, read that article for sure.
So, one, one clarification and a question. Um, just to clarify, Dan Bignell is not a consultant for the township. You said he has been consulting for the township?
He is informally consulted.
Informally consulted. And to clarify, the technical expert we are under contract with is Keith Gadway.
Keith Gadway, yes.
And so what is the process then? I assume that for the township's official public comment, what is the next step? Is this something we'll get an update on at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
You will. Awesome. Thank you. Um, we're gonna meet, Will and I are going to talk with Bill Stapleton and Keith, go through our points that we think are important to include and get Keith's feedback on that specifically. He's been involved in this before.
And just to clarify, it would be the next regular meeting?
Yes.
On the twenty-third, because we do have a special meeting next Tuesday. That is not one of this.
No, we won't be ready then. Correct.
Do you need, uh, is there going to be a resolution that we, uh, will be passing in support of having, uh, the attorney and our consultant prepare something for preparation to the EPA? Cause.
I believe so, yes.
I'll be ready to support that tonight or when you bring them back on the twenty-third, whatever.
And I just want to, by that point, it'll probably be the draft comment or something close to it. Yes.
That is our last meeting before the deadline.
Yeah, so it'll have to be ready to go. Basically, I'm not anticipating that we have major changes to suggest. Hopefully, you won't have very many at all.
Great.
Well, in some ways, the, the, I think the statement from the board from December twenty twenty is, um, serves as kind of a basis. Like, we haven't diverged from that statement as a board. So, um, if this is a good thing to look at. If you have objections to anything here, um, in terms of a basis for commenting to the EPA, it would be good to raise those.
Yeah, with Kathy.
The focus, the focus of that prior resolution was more on, um, the Fourth Amendment CJ and not so much on all of the reasons for the EPA to get involved. So there's a, a bit of difference.
Yeah, it was, um, it was serving a different purpose.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, well, I think that.
Does Josh have a report? Can I do?
Well, they'll see. We have a township lobbying efforts. We have road, we have road advisory committee. We have the transit and bus advisory committee, but we have a separate report from them, but we do have a report from the manager, I hope.
Um, I, I don't have a report tonight, but I, uh, would like to request for the April sixteenth, um, board meeting. It's a special meeting related to, um, the capital improvement plan that's being considered. If we could add an item to the agenda related to the fire department, uh, because it is time-sensitive.
So I think that would take a motion. I'd be supportive, but if we could, I'd be happy to offer that motion to amend the purpose of the special meeting previously called for April
Sixteen.
Sixteenth at seven PM to add. And what is the specific item?
Uh, it's in, in reference to, um, uh, labor issues for the fire department.
Okay, a labor issue for the fire department.
So you're making that motion?
Yep.
I will second that motion. Um, all in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay. And that was.
That was my report.
That's your report, okay. Um, I believe we have an additional report, uh, from trustee Riser.
It's just a report, um, and it's a late add-on, and it was added on after I had the opportunity to meet with Township Parker and Township Attorney. Think a, about a, an idea for a resolution that I have. It came to light during a discussion after a planning commission meeting with a fellow planning commission, uh, member who happened to be a beekeeper, and he was noting that while looking into the rezoning of a parcel in an industrial area, he noted that there was a thirty-plus acre vacant parcel in an industrial area and thought that might be someplace that would be appropriate for beehives to go. And then I did a little looking around, and I see that Ypsilanti Township has had beehives on their property for nine years. Not that we need to do what they do. Ypsilanti City has allowed bees. We have a lot of vacant parcel, some that we own outright for certain purposes, some that's been preserved. Some of those parcels, now, I'm not suggesting all. I heard a suggestion about West Siouxsia Preserve, and I, that didn't come from me, but, but some of the land that the township owns could be beneficial for beekeeping to, to help with the health of the environment, to help with, uh, farming, and I have a lot of whereas clauses. I'm not a beekeeper, and, uh, I put together a draft, and this is only a draft. This is not an action item tonight, and I, and I welcome input from this board. I welcome input from the public. I welcome input from beekeepers. How, how, is this something that's feasible or not? And I have a, a number of whereas clauses, and then ultimately be a resolve that, uh, no pun intended, that we come up with, um, a policy that promotes the placement of. that we come up with a policy that promotes the placement of bee hives on township parcels on which it will be appropriate. If there's a sidewalk, if there's a park, if there's a playground, if there's too much density, then that's not appropriate. But if there are some parcels of land in which it would not disturb the residents to have these bees there, and these bees would help the residents and pollinate our plants and pollinate our farms and help with our environment, then to do that, I, I have suggested policy considerations. That's not the Riser policy. Riser doesn't make the policy. People who know more about this than I do. It's, these are just some considerations that came off the top of my head. But, but it would be up to, I would imagine, the township manager in conjunction with legal and in conjunction with apiary experts and whatever appropriate staff. So this is just an idea that I had that I'm looking for, you know, constructive criticism on how to make it better and how to make it viable if it's something that we can do. For instance, someone said remove by December 1st. If that's not a suitable date, that's why it says, or other suitable date. So it's, it's an idea, it's a work in progress, and I would like input to help make it a better product if it's something we can do. That's all I have to say.
Thanks for bringing the idea to the board. I think it would be good for us to schedule a future agenda item, just a discussion on this idea, because, you know, yay bees. But two, I think that David Reed has a, a good concern, because this has come up before, but we had a private citizen lobbying the township to put kind of a private beekeeping club on a preserve. And at that time, we kind of looked at it and said, hey, David is, is right, if my memory serves. David's not here anymore, but that we don't have clearly noted in our ordinance or other guide kind of what some parameters are around the preserved properties. I also note, John, that you're not necessarily talking about preserved policies. Right, so you're kind of talking about a lot of different things. So I, I, we're talking about the nine and a half acres we currently lease to Vestergaard's for their cows. I wonder about a leasing option instead of a pilot program, like is there? So, I mean, I think it's, it's good, we, we should have a discussion about it, but I'd like to have beekeeping people here. I'd like to have, I'd like to kind of understand from Mariah, kind of, you know, in terms of preserved lands, what, you know, if, if any limitations we have on our preserves, you know, aside from.
Just, I'm just, you know, just spitballing. I mean, it's the idea, it's a genesis of an idea, I guess is what I'd say, right?
Yeah, so I think we need to have a discussion.
Because in beekeeping, it's like, oh, what's the liability? Should we get spit by a bee? And they're, you know, they're sensitive to bees, and they die. Where's our liability? You know, you take this, you gotta consider all those extremes, number one, right? Where's our liability? And if they, hey, if I have a beekeeping facility and I make honey and I sell the honey, I'm taking a profit.
Yeah.
How does all that, because you know all that stuff's gonna come up. And is it more than bees? I think to your point, are there other things that could be beneficial? You know, the land, like is there a way to harvest the land that's good for the community? And maybe it's more than just bees, and maybe it's other things too. I don't know what those are. So like I said, I think it's just a genesis of a concept to get started. Bees might be the first one. Maybe we start with bees, but maybe it's broader than that. I don't know. I like the idea that just land is sitting there rather than go do something. I think that's great.
Yeah, and I just. Trying to develop our land. I was just trying to get bees out of the environment if no one gets hurt. And if it has, does it just be one hive, one parcel is the starting point? That, I'm just trying to, you know, the community is gonna be.
The mechanics, why would we go buy a pilot versus a lease?
I, I think, I think what I sensed, John, is that there's sort of generally a positive reaction with, with some questions.
Which is what I, which is why it's under reports, not discussion or action.
Could you submit it as a discussion item for a future meeting, so we can have kind of a full discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I could put it for discussion or possible action item for the next meeting.
Well, we'd idea.
I would, I would prefer discussion only, because, just because, unless you have it all lined up by then, I'll be down with it. But I'd like to know if it's, you know, why we're looking at a pilot instead of leasing land? And I'm, like, if we're proposing, you know, you've got listed here, like, the nine and a half acres, we already have an active lease with Vestergaard. And so I'm, are we considering those that we're already leasing? So I just, you know, we just need to talk about it. I mean, everybody's down with bees.
I'm not sure the cows on the Vestergaard farm would be down with bees.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, you, uh, thank you. I don't want to take.
I know. It's a little more than a red line. I just think we need some more expertise in the room to have the conversation.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Trustee Riser, for that report, introducing that. I look forward to any more discussion about that in the future meeting. I believe that brings us to the end of reports. We have one item of unfinished business, and this was prepared by Laura Preps, but I don't know if she's here remotely, or if you're gonna speak to this, Mariah?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak.
Okay.
So at your last board meeting, we had a presentation from the Goodrich folks about proposed uses, amending the Goodrich PUD to add uses. At the time that we, that you had that discussion and voted on the uses, because we didn't have those, we didn't have a prepared ordinance in front of you. So this is your zoning ordinance amendment for the planned unit development of Goodrich PUD, and it is just listing those specific allowed uses that you approved at your last meeting, very straightforwardly.
Are there any questions?
Thank you for preparing this, Mariah. Just before voting on it, I'll just note, correct the typo in the, to the definition language. It says in the, I think I got a little mixed up, and a question for you, Mariah. On the end, where it says posted, adopted, final publication effective date, what does posted mean?
So I didn't actually prepare this. I only prepared some of it.
Okay, I'm gonna strike posted.
That, that's not.
If there's an objection, okay, thank you.
Yep. I think the clerk's certificate is a little more complicated than it usually is also.
So just so everybody knows, I use my own certificate, no matter what comes with it.
Okay, fair.
Right.
So are there any other modifications to the language of the resolution? Someone appeared to move the adoption of the.
I'll move it. Not, not a resolution. I would, it's an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to move the adoption of zoning ordinance amendment 2024-01, planned unit development, Goodrich PUD development.
Support by Riser?
Okay, so.
Question?
Moved by Flintoff, support by Riser.
Question? Does, does this have to be voiceable, not, not just a?
We should do roll call.
Yeah, I think this, I think this will do a roll call. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, for ZO?
Yes.
Motion adopted, ordinance amendment adopted, 6-0.
Thank you. That brings us to the new findings, and we have moved the report of the Transit Advisory Committee. And I just want to point out to the Transit Advisory Committee that we did get to this before nine o'clock, so. I talked, I talked with them earlier. Direct, yeah, and so if you, members of the committee would come forward to participate in this, and I will turn to Township Manager Parker to introduce this agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Just as some background information, the county trustees established the Transit Advisory Committee in December of last year to evaluate transit services, to do research and analyze the status of transit to date, and to consider community engagement as part of the process, and put together recommendations on how we should proceed related to the village for transit. And so I'd like to first of all kind of introduce members of the advisory committee and their representation. So we have, as members, Jan Culberson from the Planning Commission, Kim Lor from Washtenaw Area Value Express, which is WAVE, our supervisor, and myself. In addition, we also have technical support that has been really beneficial in moving this process forward. Chris Chang, our project manager within the township, Forrest Yang, the executive director for AAAT-A, Marie Gress from WAVE, Ken Anderson from AAAT-A. And then we had a couple of other members from WAVE as well as AAAT-A to assist on an as-needed basis.
We also had folks from Watts and Semco.
Yes, yes, we did. Initially, I believe Semco was involved in Watts, yes. So that's basically the advisory committee as well as the technical support team. And we did work together as a team to put together the report and recommendations. I think we went through maybe 20 drafts of the report, at least 20. Okay. Just in terms, again, the committee purpose was to evaluate transit services, given the fact that the village expires the end of this year, to provide recommendations in terms of how we should move forward. And as part of that process, I'd like to talk about transit funding, and then we'll have two of the committee members, Ken Anderson and Marie Gress, talk about transit services. So just in terms of the funding, the transit village was approved by voters in 2015 for a 10-year period. In 2015, the mileage rate was .3627, and currently the rate is .3468 due to the Headley Amendment. The village currently generates about $589,000 for bus and transit services. And again, the final levy will take place in December of this year. What I'd like to do is maybe pass around some information. The spreadsheet provides information related to transit as of 2016 up until March 31st, 2024. And just in looking at the revenue and the expenditures, they're pretty consistent throughout the year, with the exception that you think about 2024 and then 2025, the rate increases primarily because of an increase in service delivery. So one of the questions that came up was just in reference to how much money is required to maintain a nine-month operating fund balance reserve, and that amount is shown in the shaded area at the very bottom. There is additional funding available each year. However, starting in 2024, 25, the cost of transit will increase by approximately $100,000 based on increases in services. So for example, with transit services through AAAT-A, they'll start earlier and end later, and then the frequency will increase from one hour to a half an hour. So there's a cost associated with those service changes. So with that, I think I'd like to maybe have Ken and Marie talk about services related to transit.
Hi, I'm Kenny Anderson. I'm the senior planner at AAAT-A. And, and I really want to get into detail, but that's probably, this isn't the night to do that. So just to give you guys a quick overview of the services that are operated in SIO Township. Right now, there's five fixed routes. So fixed routes are the big buses that you see driving around up and down Jackson Road and the other places like that. The major corridor in SIO Township for transit right now is Jackson Road, and that's currently served by Route 30. The entire length of the corridor from Wagner Road out to Meyer is served with big buses right now. See, Wagner Road from Dexter down to Jackson Road, that little piece of road there is currently served by Route 31. And then Routes 26 and 29, which are the SIO Ridge corridor and all the apartment complexes and condos out there, there are two routes that serve that area. There's also two routes that touch just inside the boundaries of the township out of Miller Road and M14 interchange. There's a park and ride lot out there where users can park their cars and get on either Route 61 or 34 and ride those into downtown Ann Arbor or the university. In addition to regular fixed route bus service, we also operate something called Demand Response Service, which is basically door-to-door service required by the Federal Transit Administration. Every time that we put a fixed route out on the street, we have to provide service for seniors and people with disabilities within an area of surrounding those routes with, I believe it's three quarters of a mile surrounding around. So that is specifically for those two types of people. The major trip generators in SIO Township are the Meyer out on Jackson Road, followed by the apartment complexes in the SIO Ridge area. The same patterns show up for the Demand Response Service, sorry, I should have called that A-Ride. For the A-Ride service, the ridership patterns follow those as well. And so thank you, Manager Parker, for talking about the increase in service. That's all going to start in August of this year. There are other village services that are actually going to start in April, but that is an express route between Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. So that's, you know, that people might benefit by going between those, but that isn't directly affected here. So, speaking a little bit about ridership. Ridership before the pandemic was fairly strong out in this area, but we found that across the entire region, once the pandemic hit and even as the restrictions were lifted afterwards, ridership hasn't quite recovered to where it was, to the levels before the pandemic. So generally across the system, ridership has recovered to about 60 to 70, maybe in the mid 70s percent of what it was before the pandemic. And then Routes 26, 29, 30, and 31, they currently, the SIO Township portions of those currently have recovered to around between 55 to 60% in there. So they haven't quite recovered as much as the rest of the system, but there's still, you know, there still is growth year upon year for those. We are actually going to be doing a market segment analysis coming up over the next one to two years, because we're trying, we wanted to study what happened, where have people gone, where are they? I mean, we have our gut feelings of, you know, a lot of people are now working remotely, aren't using it as much, but we will be doing this study to kind of help those along, so that, you know, we can bring more information to you about those services as well. I'll turn it over to you.
Great. My name's Marie Gress. I'm the executive director at WAVE. WAVE is Western Washtenaw Area Value Express. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3), and we provide rides to all in Western Washtenaw County, SIO Township included. We've actually been providing transportation to SIO Township since 2008, before your village even started. And now your village dollars, you pay AAAT-A and AAAT-A subcontracts with us, so we can continue providing services, particularly, Ken mentioned fixed routes. We have two fixed routes that come through SIO. The first one we call the Community Connector that goes Chelsea, Dexter, and then here to SIO. And we have a purposeful transfer point at Meyer with AAAT-A. The other one is the Jackson Road Connector, and that. The other one is the Jackson Road Connector, and that just goes along the Jackson Road corridor, down to cohousing and all of that. That section of Jackson Road where that route goes, both routes go, they both hit those spots, and they're served every hour. We also have a door-to-door service as well available for your residents. And then, as far as data goes, you have the data chart in your, in your report that was provided to you. And what Ken said about their numbers, pre and post-COVID is the same that we've experienced as well.
Okay. Any questions before we move on?
I have some questions. Thanks so much, everybody, for your work. Thank you, Joyce. A question on the cost for WAVE. I see the projected cost for AAATA on a table here. What are the projected costs for WAVE?
Yeah, so the numbers that you see for AATA, our numbers are embedded in theirs because your contract is with them currently. Yep, and they pay us, this year, it's around a hundred and fifteen thousand to provide the services that we do. One of the things we talked about is if you wanted to add stops along our existing routes, the one that makes the most sense coming up soon is on Baker Road. Our Community Connector comes down that, and so it makes sense to have a stop as you develop that. And so then there would be cost increases that go with adding additional stops, but right now, it's about a hundred and fifteen.
Additional stops, but also you were considering addition, sort of frequency?
Yes, you're also looking at frequency.
And we briefly talked about the opportunity to maybe look at additional stops like in certain areas of the township, yeah, which would be an expense beyond what we're paying now.
So the, just to follow up on that, so the capital costs, I see at fifty-one or fifty-nine thousand, which looks kind of, I'm curious, what is included in those capital costs? And what is included in those capital costs? And would something like an additional bus stop be included in capital costs if the funding were available for that?
I can answer capital costs first, and then I'll bring it back to you. Because WAVE serves a rural area, rural Western Wasnaut, our vehicles are covered in full by fifty-three-ten funding from the state. It's eighty percent state, twenty percent federal funds. And so we don't have to rely on local funds for capital costs the same way that AATA does.
Okay, so these are AATA kind of capital, the costs.
For vehicle replacement and things like that.
Okay. And so are there other kind of one-time costs that the committee's proposing? I understand there's the increase in service, but when you talk about like additional stops and things, you know, an additional bus stop, how would that get done? What's the, what would be the process for that?
Well, there's, got it by me. So there's two ways to think about additional stops. One is additional stops as part of the service that's being provided. And I think that's, that's what we were, that's what we, that's what our focus is. But there is a, kind of a pending community benefit from the Woodview Commons development to put in a physical structure for a bus stop somewhere in that neighborhood.
That's kind of what I was wondering is, are the service costs, do the service, kind of the proposal for the costs over the next ten years, do they include an anticipation of kind of the capital, that sort of stuff? Like, you know, additional bus stops or other infrastructure, whatever's needed stuff?
So, so that's not factored into what's being proposed, certainly is something that could be considered. However, I think as the committee met and had the discussion, we were somewhat concerned, concerned about increasing costs to the extent where it might change our recommendation related to what amount should be levied or requested of voters. So we tried to maintain that level of balance between what residents are paying now and what should be considered moving forward.
Okay. And I think, I think for me, I'm just curious about kind of what the, just like we did with the fire or anything else, what's our fully loaded costs, right, that we need? And then kind of, how do we fund it? I understand they're related. But, and Joyce, thank you for preparing the historic co-revenue expenditure and fund balance. I think what, I was looking at this as well earlier today, because I was like, how is the bus fund doing? And, and I think one of my, something that was a surprise and, you know, we need to address is, you know, the fund balance here is, is we consistently have brought in revenues more than our expenses. And right now, even if you add in, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand more of expenses, our fund balance would still be, you know, roughly five hundred thousand dollars above the nine-month minimum. And so I'm uncomfortable asking for more money when we've got, you know, funding available. I want to just have a plan for it, and that could be part of our capital plan, could be something. But that's why I was wondering what, if there had been consideration given to, you know, the existing funding that we have and how to responsibly allocate that.
Right. So this is the first, if I can take a stab at it, the first time I've seen this chart tonight. And prior to that, I was under the impression that we were bringing in less money on the millage than what the actual costs were. So I guess that's not true, but.
And I had been under that impression too.
Okay.
And, and because, because, yeah, because every year when we go to budget time, but then when I actually looked at it.
Okay, okay. And actually, we will be bringing in less money as we move forward if, you know, if, for example, it's reduced beyond what was in place beforehand, primarily because the cost has increased close to six hundred thousand dollars a year. And then the other consideration too, when I look at, like, Plank Moran put together the report, the fiscal years are different. So, you know, we have our fiscal year, and then we have the fiscal year for AATA. So there's some, there's some overlap there.
And by the report, you mean that the revenue expenditure is historical?
Yeah. And so you've got a couple of things happening. You have the situation where the service cost is increasing starting in October of this year, beyond what we've paid in the past. And then you have the difference in the fiscal year, so all of our expenses are not shown the same in the report.
Right, but even cumulatively.
Well, if, yeah, well, if you look at it from a cumulative standpoint, if you have one point,
That's it, we got.
One million dollars.
A million dollars.
A million dollars, one dollar.
Back out the three hundred minimum.
Yeah, and you look at your reserve, three hundred thousand, you have about seven hundred thousand remaining. And then if you look at the increase in service, services over that timeframe moving forward, if you, I guess my comment is, if you reduce the millage, will you have enough money to actually pay your expenses? And as a result, so would your revenue and expenses balance off without using?
And I'm not making any proposal about a millage rate. What I'm asking, I'm just trying to get a clear sense of what our kind of projected, you know, real costs are. And if there's space, which it looks like there may be, to propose some kind of one-time capital.
Yeah, I think you could do that.
You know, but, and I don't know for sure, I'm just looking at a balance sheet.
Yeah, yeah, I think you could do that.
Trustee Reiser.
And, and one of the points I want to make and maybe ask about is to Jan and Kim, as you know, coming through the planning commission, are things like crossroads, which seems like that could be a detour on the Twenty-six or Twenty-nine for if we got density there, apartment, multifamily housing. That's, that's a place where AATA service seems, seems appropriate. We're, we're building out Woodview Commons, correct? And does the bus currently go there?
I'm going to address that in my.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you might want to finish the recommendations.
We got Goodrich coming with, we've got things coming down the pike from a, from a residential housing that are on our bus loops now. Anyways, if I don't want to say it better, it's you.
So I think the next part of our presentation is in reference to recommendations. And we have Jan and Kim that will provide comments in that regard.
Thank you very much. So. To answer your question, trustee Reiser, there's two parts of our, the first, in the section of the report, which talks about our recommendations. Number one, it talks about some phased-in or anticipated expansion. So one of those areas is, right now, WAVE covers Jackson Road as well as the AATA number thirty Jackson. And one of those routes that comes from Chelsea goes down, ends up coming to Meyer, goes down Jackson Road, as well as the Jackson Road Connector that WAVE provides. So we were concerned about two things. One is, we have a development that's coming on board on Baker Road in Marshall and another area right there at, on Jackson, just east of Baker that you just mentioned. And right now, the number thirty route, the AATA bus route, does not go out that way. It only goes to Meyer back. So we rely on WAVE service to bridge that gap right now with our Jackson Road connector. And, and it's, it's, it's put in the report as an expansion because right now, we don't need it. But that was a big concern of the committee, as well as frequency, as Supervisor Hathaway pointed out. If you, right now, those buses are running every hour for WAVE. I don't know that that's enough to lure people out to catch mass transit at that new development on Jackson Road. So we were talking about expansion in the sense of creating more frequency through WAVE as well. So that's item number one. We also, I, I think a lot of people in our community are not aware that we have door-to-door service right now. You don't have to be a senior, you don't have to be handicapped, you can be wanting, you can be a sixteen-year-old wanting to go to the library and in search of paper, we can take you to WAVE, take you, pick you up at your door, take you to the Dexter Library, or we can pick you up at your door, take you to the Ann Arbor Library over down, down the road on Oak Valley, down the road from the Q. So I think a lot of people are not aware of it, and unfortunately, our, our survey didn't hit that part of it. So we, as everybody knows, we have an increasing elderly population. And so I just wanted to kind of get the word out about that, about the door-to-door service that we're already having, and we're looking and trying to expand that as well. We've also talked with AATA about having a transfer slip mechanism such that if you get on at our WAVE bus, picks you up at Syo Farms, and you connect with the AATA bus at Meyer. Right now, you pay a WAVE fare, and then when you get on at the AATA bus at Meyer, you pay another fare. And so we've recommended to AATA, I know that WAVE is very eager to get on board with that, that there'd be one fare. So you would pay your fare to WAVE, and you get a transfer slip from WAVE driver. That would be good for ninety minutes, so you could stop at Meyer, pick up your groceries, et cetera, and go home. But, and so we're still waiting to hear the final approval. I think that that had to go through AATA's Board of Directors because it implicated their fares, and that's all within their purview, so.
It would also work the other way too.
It would work both ways. If you're coming from downtown Ann Arbor, you've been working and you live at Syo Farms, you get off, you get a, pay your, pay your fare to AATA, get a transfer, pick up whatever you wanted at Meyer, get back on the WAVE bus, and go back home. So that's something we're real excited about, you know, I know I was kind of pressuring AATA to. And they're supposed to get back with us this month, so we're waiting to hear that. And I think that makes a lot of sense because all, all the services that, well, I shouldn't say that, but all the line services that AATA provides, that's been in place for many, many decades, even the ninety-minute timeframe. So I see that as a really, a big benefit for our citizens, our riders. I think that's, oh, renew and restore the millage. It's my last item. As I think someone mentioned earlier, we're looking to renew and restore point three six two seven. That was last year's ten-year millage, and we're looking to renew and restore that. It's my understanding that, in speaking with our assessor, that with the numbers and the evaluations going up on properties, that we should have more than enough to pay for. Or, and at the time, I'm still thinking we weren't bringing in sufficient amount of dollars for paying just operations, not even dealing with cap, capital. But at the time, that was what the discussion centered around, so I apologize.
No, no, not, like I said, I think for, for two years, I was under the wrong impression that we weren't bringing in enough on, on the bus. And every budget season, it would be a discussion, and I was wrong. And, and when you look at the balance sheet, I'm actually concerned for the opposite reason that we are accruing too much fund balance, and that's also not a position I want to be in.
Well, this is kind of stepping out of my little template here, but I know one of the issues that have come up for our community is having shelters at certain locations. And, yeah, it's my understanding that it gets complicated because there's certain areas that AATA, based on their criteria, won't put a shelter in. And so there could be some use of those dollars if we have enough to be able to, because you have to put in a sidewalk as well. So that's just one idea of what monies could be spent, spent for.
There's a lot of need, yeah.
All right, thanks.
In other words, what I love about this is we get, for, you know, the renew and restore, we actually get enhanced services, and we have a bucket of money to be able to look at expanding those services as, you know, some of these developments come online. So to me, that's really great. And if we have some one-time capital expenses, that's good too. However, I get to do the recommendations around education outreach and ongoing collaborations. And those include, one, and these are some ideas and discussions from within the group that we didn't want to lose because we thought we all learned a lot. It was a discovery process in, in our dialogue. So one, to work with the DDA and see if it makes sense to have, establish a go-pass for folks, employers within our DDA. That's similar to what Ann Arbor does, where you can get a go-pass for like fifteen bucks and you can go on.
Unlimited ridership.
Limited ridership, yep. And then also, I want to thank specifically Chris because you were instrumental in getting the community survey out. And the recommendation is, it did launch on March eighth. It would be great to keep it up through the end of April, and then have a, then we'll have a little bit more data to deal with. And right now, we got a hundred and four responses, probably a few more since that.
I looked at it today, it's about one forty-ish.
Which is awesome, which is awesome. So some really good feedback from that survey, and you can see the preliminary feedback in the attachments. Then moving on to two really important engagement strategies. One is setting up a, an engagement plan and a committee to do that around the millage and, you know, talking about what, you know, public transportation. One of the things that we all recognized, it was very hard to describe, right, the, the services that exist within Syo. So I think, you know, having some sort of map, cohesive map of, of where you can go, how you can go, what the, you know, what the, the, the cost is, et cetera, would really help with the millage and ongoing, right? You can always add to it. Then, and there's, there are all sorts of points around this millage sort of Engagement Education Committee. Then, and there's, there are all sorts of points around this village sort of engagement education committee. And I think it, one, it's a great way to spread the word about public transit and what's available because I wasn't aware of some of the stuff that I wrote AATA and Ann Arbor all the time. And then the other one is an ongoing subcommittee and the recommendations to do it under the planning commission. So that transportation can be more holistically looked at, not in our master plan overall within the township. So it becomes more integral. We don't want to lose the collaboration and the contact that we have with SEMCOG, Watts, AAA TA and Wave. I think having everybody at the table, it would probably wouldn't be a committee that would meet monthly, but it it would certainly be a quarterly kind of thing. And and this also comes up with the SEMCOG grant. There's funding around some of these transportation things that that we would miss out if we don't have some folks really looking at that. So and that that transportation committee could also be, you know, looking at you know, ways of making sure we're making, we're spending the dollars wisely and looking at when those expansions take place and making those recommendations. So it could tie in with master planning, it could tie in with our developments that are getting approved. So, and and I think that will also increase ridership. You know, as people know more about how to use public transportation and we make it easier and more frequent. So those are the the remaining recommendations.
I have a question with respect to there's a model motion that talks about an attached resolution. But so when I printed it up, there wasn't a cash resolution, but there's also a resolution on our, on our table. This is a substitute or or is it?
It should be the same.
Okay. Because I'm, I I would move there to adopt the attached resolution. Placing on the August sixth, twenty twenty four ballot, a proposal to renew and restore the Sio Township Transportation Village at zero point three, six, two, seven mil for a period of ten years, twenty twenty five to twenty thirty four, inclusive for the purpose of providing funds for public transportation services in Sio Township.
We're not prepared to support. We discuss more.
Oh, well, I'm. I just want to get it on the floor so we can discuss.
Well, I'll, I'll support it. So it's moved by Riser, support by Hathaway, and now we'll have some further discussion.
I just want to thank again, you've given us a ton of information. First time we're looking at it. We've got eight recommendations in here. I recognize in the interest of time, there's some interest in us moving forward on the one recommendation tonight regarding. So if we could focus on that. But I do want to say I want to spend more time with the committee, maybe at a subsequent meeting to talk about those other seven recommendations.
Well, and and actually, is it okay for me to speak at this?
Sure, absolutely. Of course.
And actually, it would, it would make sense to spend more time with some of the recommendations. I I think we raised the point about the amount in fund balance beyond reserve. I think there's a couple of things that could be considered and, you know, if we're talking about one time improvements, maybe either this committee or the committee that we're discussing related to the planning commission could be a part of that discussion.
I I think so. I think I think more immediately. So so yes. I mean, I I like the idea of a committee. I think we can talk about it at a future date. I think one thing that's happened with bus services, and I'm so grateful that you all have picked this up, is that you know, it's been kind of an area that's been sort of under managed over the years and under attended to. And when things get under attended to, sometimes we have, we miss some opportunities. And that's what that, you know, fund balance increasing is, is not having it in a capital plan. Not, you know, putting it forth, not, you know, kind of thinking, oh, this is just a contract. Think of it as like the check set sign to AAA TA and and not like the Sio Township bus services. So I'm really glad that you kind of watched this. And I think this will help us manage and plan in the future. I I am, I I have to say, I'm, I I, it is uncomfortable. Not unwilling, but I am uncomfortable being asked to vote on a village proposal the first time we talk about it. We think about everything with fire, how much we, you know, had, you know, kind of the projections. And I think that what you were saying is you believe ten years is the right length of time, that there aren't going to be big changes in the ten years and that the same amount of money is going to cover us. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just want to confirm that because we're, we're making a decision to do it again for ten years. It sounds like the other developments won't be so different. The, I just have a question, a simple one, Mariah, on the resolved clause.
Yes.
And maybe you mentioned it, but who came up with the it is estimated that the point three, six, two, seven mil would raise approximately six, one, six, nine, eight, zero?
That's from the assessor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Andrew here.
And could we add a period? And do we think that it is clear enough that it would be assessed beginning in twenty twenty five? Given that we're, you know, asking a year early, this has come up with some of our language with other proposals?
Well, I think it's clear enough because we, this, this current village doesn't expire until the end of twenty twenty four, right? We're not collecting twice this year. So is that your question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure voters would be clear because they often get confused. I know I hear language of renew and restore. That is not in this language before us tonight to vote on. And so.
It is.
Where?
For a period of ten years be renewed and restored.
Okay, I see.
So and and for those of you that don't, that aren't familiar with the renew and restore, renew is we're renewing the village itself. Restore is that we're taking it back up to its original.
Headley clawback.
Moving back from Headley.
Okay.
Or getting back up to where we were before Headley started jumping away.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions about the proposal language. I do, do wonder, you know, about the you know, I I'm wondering if maybe this committee or some subset, whoever you think, Joyce, but couldn't kind of quickly engage on the capital one time question? And if it could be, you know, a proposal that comes back to the board pretty quickly, whether it's part of the capital improvement plan or an amendment to that. But what I think we should really do going forward is have Fund Two Thirty as part of our capital improvement plan. Unless our township attorney tells us otherwise, you know, the proposal says that the funding is for the purpose of providing funds for public transportation services in Sio Township. I don't know that that.
We would have to define maybe to some extent what was inclusive of that language.
Agreed.
And then from there, we can actually sit down and talk about what type.
allowable costs.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that would be my one concern because I don't know that we've ever spent the bus fund on anything but these two contracts.
Yeah.
And I would want to make sure that that's in line with the voters' intention.
Actually, just one.
Well, contract and sub项.
But but I I think the other thing too, and it's not something that that we would need to do tonight, but if there's an interest in using part of those dollars in fund balance for one time expenditures, you know, we we probably do need to identify what's allowable and what is not.
Agreed.
And then there were things that the committee did discuss, but we did not include them in the proposal. So maybe we could go back and revisit those items as well.
One, one, one thing to bear in mind, I learned this through the bus shelters that were paid for by the DDA is that AA ATA will sort of accept bus shelters, sometimes a little unwillingly perhaps, but they'll accept them and take responsibility for maintaining them if they are on a fixed AA ATA route. But any bus shelters that we create that are outside of an AA ATA route, that's on us. So one way of thinking of possibly is not just the creation of the bus shelters, but also the maintenance of the bus shelters that are outside of the AA ATA fixed route. So for right now, anything beyond on Jackson Road that that we've established a bus shelter beyond Meyer to the west is still on Sio Township. That's our responsibility.
And like, what factors go into where you put a shelter, like downtown city, how many people use it, whether there's, they have to walk there and wait a long time, whether it's seniors or people with disability or like, I don't know, like, what goes into, should we put a shelter here or not?
Yes. So everything that you just mentioned, we just need some factors. Before we got into the pandemic, we were to be really strict and say that it'd be fifty or more people boarding a day, but everything's up in the air right now. So we could work as a subject committee for within the township boundaries, kind of coming up with what those parameters should be, because I don't think it should just be based on numbers anymore. There are definitely different factors we could dig into it.
So, you know, I think our committee could get back together for that purpose.
Yeah. And I I wonder if, you know, I'm just thinking, if we put this on for August, if we act tonight, put this on for August, as soon as we put it on, it's a huge amount of very good, fair, you know, deserved scrutiny by voters about what are we paying for? So, you know, do we need it? Why are we renewing now? Why not next year? You know, this fund balance. And so I would ask if if this team and Joyce, whatever configuration you think you need or with Plan Moran, but even like a down and dirty mini CIP for the bus fund like within, you know, thirty days. And the reason I'm saying that is because, you know, I'm thinking of John Boyle, I'm thinking about, you know, how many times you know, I know the Fire Services Guidance Committee was different because it was a bigger ask. But like, you know, the projections, the financial projections and the plans, I just don't feel right about kind of going forward without a plan for spending the money we already have responsibly, in line with the will of the voters. And it might be a good chance to then be able to message to voters. And by renewing this, we'll be able to, you know, do these capital improvements.
We didn't get to the next steps on that.
Yeah.
And I also think that before we close on that one, the one place where we can be helpful on that is the FTA is very piggy and very specific about how they like to spend funds. And so any place that we, we can basically, and Marie's under, it's under these guidelines too. We can drop the bus stop pole anywhere we want, any, you know, on the side of the road or the middle of a hill. As long as it's considered, you know, a place that's that you can safely board. It's when you want to make any sort of improvements on top of that, adding cement pads or lead walks or anything like that. Then it has, we have to be connected into an existing sidewalk network. So with other townships, that may be a place where this plan can be very helpful is if there are particular stops that the committee thinks that, you know, would really benefit from some sort of a shelter, but the sidewalk stops a hundred yards down there, you know, that we're, as an agency, we're not allowed to spend the money to build those sidewalk extensions. But once those extensions are done, you know, we can provide the shelter or bench or something, you know, that part of it. If that's helpful.
All I was going to say is in terms of next steps, because I don't want to drag this out, but obviously the next step, should we move forward and adopt this this evening, be for the clerk to communicate it to county clerk, right, to put it on ballot. And then we would pivot to, as a township, to educating the public about this and addressing some of those questions. And it sounds like tonight, there's also an interest in having the committee meet.
Get back together.
Get back together, get the, get the band back together.
And and I feel about it.
Your committee by your charge is disbanded on March thirty first.
Right. I was going to address that.
Well, I was going to say, so that those were some obvious next steps. There's also something that the township can't do, and that is be involved in actually campaigning for this. And so that is something that will happen separate from the township.
Right. You know, I have like two more motions before I want to act on this one, but but I know we got it on the table. So what's the proper procedure?
I call it motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I I want to say, I actually.
More discussion, more discussion.
Yeah, I I just want to be sure that financially these projections are sound.
Well, I think.
This is the first time I've seen.
These aren't projections. This is historical information.
Okay.
This is, well, we don't have projections beyond the.
But but I do think, you know, as part of the process moving forward, you know, I want to sit down with PM Gap and look at the numbers again. Especially as we talk about twenty four, twenty five going forward. And make sure that we make, we have the amount necessary in the reserve to handle any potential shortfalls going forward. Because, you know, the way I see it, with the village that will generate and then with the expenses, they're going to be almost equal.
Yeah, and I think I, and that very well may be, Joyce. I I don't have enough information to see that. What I see is the historical trend of accruing fund balance.
Yeah.
And and so I I think what I'd like to kind of formally request with a, with a motion and tweak it as I go. Something like, you know, a motion to request that the manager and transit committee convene to develop a written financial projection of ten years of transit costs including a capital improvement plan for Fund Two Thirty within thirty days.
I can support that.
And the reason I would make that motion within thirty days is because, like the education, what are we educating about? Oh, we need to go out, you know, but we have these capital, you know, ideas. If we put them in a plan, then we can communicate about them. And I hear what you're saying about the the years being different, but without the written fiscal projection, all we have is the historical, which shows an increasing fund balance. So I'd like to see the financial projection that shows what you all know and are confident in and are telling us is that we need to renew now and that there are enough transit needs operating in capital to justify that.
We don't have that information.
We have.
That information is on that side of the table.
And that, and that's.
And that's right there.
Yeah, that's what Joyce was saying, PM Gap, our interim finance director. I think they should work with you and and develop that. It can be one page written financial projection, including a capital improvement plan for transit.
Can I suggest that we take the motions one by one and take them in the order that will.
I'd like to take this motion first. I could. That's why I asked for the procedure. Can we hold?
So I want to make another comment. We just went through rejection by your proposal that we had on the ballot. Residents want clarity about the costs. And I don't feel that we're real clear on it here tonight. I think we need a little bit longer.
Well, I I think we're talking about two different things.
But I'm still concerned here.
One is the renewal and the other one is developing a capital plan, which was not the charge of the committee.
Oh, I'm not talking about.
I was just saying, I think we're talking about two different things.
I mean, I don't even know that we have enough information yet about proposing a renewal. That's my concern.
Well, we have a deadline.
May fourteen.
Yeah, but we also have a deadline in terms of, you know, there's only so much time to work with and we're already tight in terms of putting together an education campaign for the voters.
Right.
I I think.
But what would we be educating them on? It's just, it's just getting a little more detail about what our plans are.
Right. So I'm not averse to doing the motions in the order that you said, but I am very concerned, trustee Noel, about the idea of delaying because we need to move forward with the efforts that flow from putting this on the ballot. And delaying further before we know that is not going to help that. It's going to make it very difficult. Is not going to help that, it's gonna make it very difficult. I think we know enough, if I if I can speak for the committee, I think we know enough about the costs and the fact that the township. Um, wants to continue to have bus services, that we know that we need to renew this mileage, and I think. We looked at what the, uh, cost, what it would generate if it was rolling, if it was at the lower level right now, the headly rollback level. And continue to roll back from that level. Rather than restoring it to its original level from two thousand fifteen, the tax rate that we had at that time. Um, and then having the headly amendment effect from there, because you have to remember that that's also happening. Headly amendment is rational down the tax rate as you go. So it's, there's a lot of different moving parts to this, but I I I think the committee is. Uh, was confident, looking at the projections that we had for the purchase of service agreement with AATA. And where their plans are headed, that this, uh, renewal and restoration of the village would pay for that cost. What we discovered is that it would generate enough of a margin beyond that, that we could. Look at expanding services from wave that would sort of align with AAATAs expansion point, or. Um, yeah, I guess that's what you call it.
I thought wave services were included under AATA.
The cost.
The the they their revenue primarily comes from a different source, it comes through, I think, AAATA, this is another thing that we heard. But what we're talking about is an additional contract with wave. To go beyond the services that they are currently providing to sort of bring up. Um, the level of service along the Jackson Road corridor to align with what AAATA is planning, so. AAATA is gonna go from one-hour intervals to half-hour intervals. If we don't provide additional funds to wave, then they're gonna be out of alignment, but if we do provide. A, you know, a, you know, by comparison, a relatively modest sum to weigh. They can bring their, uh, frequency of service up to the same level so that it it feels to the riders. Especially if there's a transfer slip, as if it's kind of a seamless service all the way from, um, Wagner to Baker Road.
So I'm supportive of bus service, but I just, this is a lot, a lot to absorb. You've been on the committee, you've been on the committee and all of you, you guys have, and, you know, I'm hearing some of this for the first time.
I understand, and and we learned a lot. I I think you heard that from the committee, everybody on the committee learned a lot in the process. Um, so we're we're sharing the benefits of our of that learning with everyone here. But we're also very mindful of the timeframe that we have to work with in terms of. Spreading that information out to the people who will actually be making the decision when it comes.
Yeah, we were told that we needed to make sure we had, were prepared, get back with you, so. For the August ballot and all of that that we.
Definitely, so we would have these two regional meetings to consider.
I'm gonna support my motion, I'm gonna support your motion. Um, I plan on voting for both of them. I wanna proceed tonight with with renewing the mileage. Uh, uh, restoring and renewing a mileage, and then I also support your. Uh, doing a deeper dive into the capital and 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 to the services, so that's just my take on it, so. I would hope that we could vote soon on these and move on to other matters, because we have guests here.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm just saying, it's it's, I appreciate everybody's work. I'm, I I understand you want to move forward with this, I wanna have time to talk about the other seven recommendations, maybe at a subsequent meeting. I I just said, and it's the timing of it all, I just said I'm uncomfortable. You know, I'm not opposing it tonight, but I'm just uncomfortable, just ideally, we want to have one board meeting where we. You know, talk about a military proposal and about it, and we think about, you know, everything else. That usually goes into, you know, multiple board meetings, so that's all it is. Um, and in particular, in in kind of. I I would like to go back if I could restate the motion I made, and Kathy, I think you supported.
Did. But I wanna hear the.
Yeah, and I, um, I, I'm writing it down here, so let me see if I've got it right and if it's acceptable to you, Joyce. I'm a manager, uh, motion to request that the manager committee and PM Gap develop a written ten-year, ten- written ten-year financial projections. For transit services, including, uh, CIP for Fund Two Thirty.
So I I guess.
What do you suggest?
Uh. Who would mention within thirty days, where you're referring to looking at the, uh, fund balance to determine. If there is funding available for one-time improvements, is that?
That's what I mean, but and I could say including any one-time improvements. And as well as the financial projections of, okay, let's let's spread this, you know. This out over ten years, we've got our revenue, we've got our projected costs, that's all I mean, is like projected. Ten-year revenue, projected ten-year expenditures.
Yeah.
Including any suggested one-time capital.
Yeah.
That.
Yeah, we could look at that.
Okay, because, I mean, I I think it's important to have it, and again, just down and dirty, we know it's an estimate, but then we have something. To be able to discuss, and then we'll also know what the kind of priority capital expenditure should be.
Are you comfortable with that motion as it stands?
Comfortable with the motion. Do you feel that's enough?
Um, yeah, I I do, I feel like with that, um. And the couple of. With that, I can support, um, placing it on the ballot, um, but then I wanna.
Why don't we have the vote on your motion first, and then we'll turn to the, uh, to trustee Riser's motion. So it was moved by Flintoff, support by Noel, and please read it just one more time.
Sure, a motion to request that the manager committee and PM Gap develop written ten-year financial projections for. Transit services, including any one-time. Capital improvements. From Fund Two Thirty, um. You wanna say thirty days, forty-five days? Probably thirty days.
Yeah, probably thirty days.
Yeah, I think I think thirty days, because we're gonna, as soon as we do this tonight, we're gonna have to have answers we don't have.
Right.
But we've got a deadline, it probably.
Well.
We we.
We have, we do have to get the committee together, and that does take a little bit of.
Yeah, it does, but but really, I think PM Gap and, you know, you have the experts here, it should be pretty quick work, I would hope, to get it done.
So that's the motion, um, if you would please call the roll.
Sure, uh, Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Brazil?
Yes.
Motion adopted, thank you.
Okay, that brings us back to Riser's motion to approve the resolution, to adopt the resolution.
I would just, um, fix the typo at the top and add the period on the question.
Is that acceptable to you, trustee?
Of course.
All right, please call the roll.
All right, Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Brazil?
Yes.
Right, resolution adopted, six-year.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks, Chris, you didn't get called on, but you probably are not worried about that.
One other question, so with the others, uh, recommendations, um, any suggestions on how we should proceed?
Yeah, I, well, some of them are service recommendations, I guess the one I wanted to talk more about. Um, was kind of the two committees that are proposed, but I don't think we need to talk about that tonight. Uh, but those were the two I would prioritize, maybe for board discussion at our next regular meeting. Or whatever timeline you're ready for, but I think. I think we need to keep, keep this moving.
Yes.
So you want us to come back?
Indefinitely.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thanks, great job.
Thank you, everybody. It's a bit of patience, too.
And you're not done with us. We're gonna be coming for those numbers. You too. We were putting those together, so I'm glad that that's where it's already done, so, yeah, well, um. Manager Perko will definitely work with you to get those projections together.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to, uh, item J two. Um, and this, Brandon, is, I think, one of your items.
Yeah, Brandon's.
This is agenda item J, actually, it's agenda item J one, excuse me, um. It is twenty twenty-four GMC Sierra fifteen hundred and twenty twenty-four GMC twenty-five hundred. I'm pricing that wrong, with warning lights and decked toolbox.
Um, when I first got hired here, one of the first things I did was look at the fleet and see what kind of shape that it was in. Um, when I looked at it, I noticed that we had a outdated, rusted van, um, sitting in the back that wasn't being used. Uh, you can't open up most of the side compartments in the trunk space, uh, due to some damage. When you open up the, uh, doors, the seats are completely torn and missing parts. Um, and it's definitely, uh, in need of being replaced. So in this proposal, there is a trade-in value that was offered from La Fontaine for fifteen hundred dollars. Um, also, I looked at the F two fifty, which is a truck that our supervisor, um, was using. It's a two thousand six with a hundred and forty-seven thousand miles on it. Right, uh, field supervisor, um, and that is rusted, the back tailgate don't work. Um, and, uh, needs to be replaced as well, there's been numerous, uh, repairs done to it. And so based on that information, knowing that we are working on a capital improvement plan, and knowing the direction of hiring two more employees. And making accommodations to have enough vehicles to accommodate the new staff. Uh, their request is for two additional vehicles to be bought. Um, the van can either be traded in for fifteen hundred dollars, or if the board wishes, can be. Um, dealt with a different, a different way of your choosing. Um, not a huge impact on cost, as you can see, um. And, uh. Currently, right now, both trucks are about fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, I don't have the quotes for the lights to be put in. Uh, the deck toolbox is a thousand dollars a piece per vehicle. Uh, the warning lights are probably gonna be three thousand dollars or less. Um, so each vehicle will probably come in right around fifty-five and fifty-six thousand dollars, fully equipped. Uh, bringing it under budget of our capital improvement, um, outline. And, uh, so my request is for the board to, um. Hopefully approve these two trucks, so we can have reliable vehicles for, um, five to six more years going forward.
Thank you, are there questions?
Yeah, just a couple, um, the model motion, I just wanna offer. Maybe a couple edits to make it more clear, uh, the strike to be purchased after March thirty-first. And to just add some clarity, um, that, and to waive bidding requirements. Um, due to, um. The. I don't know how to say this, I should have been more prepared, sorry, waive bidding requirements due to the quotes, um, being.
So I I do wanna.
Cause they've all been pre-bid, right?
Correct, this is already done being, sorry, this is already has been been used in my deal pricing.
Of my own pricing, thank you. Just something in there to make clear that we're getting the best, um.
It does include an additional GM municipal discount.
Typically, it's favorite nation prices.
Is it really?
Favorite nation, yeah.
I'm going with it.
Yeah, believe me, I get hit with it all the time. Well, that means you get the best.
And then we should have something in here that makes clear that this, we would also be authorizing lights. That aren't.
Yes, we can add that in the most model motion, correct.
Just so that we can authorize that.
About about to treat the purchase in the equipping. Of a new.
And equipping with lights.
Well, it does, it's equipping and other things.
Is it other things?
Uh, it's the lights and then a one toolbox for each vehicle.
Okay. With lights and. Toolbox? They're not doing any painting or anything, you're not doing stuff.
No, but if we didn't get the new vehicles, I do have additional. Township Sylle utility, um, magnets that were purchased recently, um, and so those will.
Those are working well, I mean, we started that because Andrea was driving her car.
Yeah, I I like it, it's, it makes it easier to trade them in down the road, we don't, it it makes it, uh, a little bit neater. So I don't, I don't see any, um, disadvantages to it.
I just wanna note that there were no vehicles proposed in years two through six in your capital plan.
Correct.
Plan.
Um. At that, at this point in time, um, depending on the direction that we continue to go with. Building maintenance and taking care of the grounds, um, potentially, because I was unclear the direction. Um, based on. The unclarity of if we're gonna keep maintaining it ourselves. Right now, a water and sewer truck, the F two fifty that I'm talking about, I would have traded in in this situation. But seeing how we have, probably decided to maintain our own grounds, I.
And we buy the plow for that?
The plow is is partially for maintaining our grounds and also maintaining the water and sewer, um, buildings. That is correct, um. However, in order to efficiently get the work done, we needed a another vehicle. Specifically for the building maintenance and custodian worker to use, so they could travel with the mower. And so because of that, I retained the F two fifty instead of trading it in. Um, and so if the mowing goes good this year. I would, I would recommend that next year we do replace that F two fifty. Um, with a different vehicle, but it was very unclear with what direction we were gonna go at the time.
I I think that you're trying something to see if it's gonna work, you may have to judge it, I like that.
My boy. My house is on fire.
Are you serious? Will, you need to go, Will, you need to go. We won't do anything crazy, but you need to go, you need a ride?
No, I don't need a ride, um.
You need to go home.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, no.
I mean, that's literally, you have to figure it out, right? I mean, if you mean that literally, you're probably trying to go to your house.
It's like a text message you just don't imagine getting.
Um, did they put any inclination of how bad it is in there?
Just go, Will, just go.
Andy's on his way.
Just go, drive safely. Just go, just leave it. Take your phone and go.
All right, sorry, everyone, um. All right.
Um, good luck.
Yeah, hopefully you get good news out.
Chance to talk about the party.
Okay. Hope everything is, everything's okay and. Okay, um, any other comments on J one? Are we ready?
Let's go.
Let's go, okay.
I wanted to come, make a comment, general comment, um. This one hundred and twenty thousand dollars that will be split between the water sewer and capital improvement fund. Is this? Does this mean that the residents in the water and sewer district are essentially paying for this, hundred percent?
Correct.
Yep, and so currently, we do have the fund balance that has already accumulated to what it is. Um, and then, yes, over the course of the next six years, based off the capital improvement plan and the rate study that we're doing. The funds would be reaccumulated, um, and then reallocated, um, in the future towards newer. Vehicles that we need to update at that point in time.
But these trucks won't be used exclusively for homes in the water and sewer district.
These will.
They will be.
Correct, yep. Yep, with these will only be used for water and sewer work.
Okay. Thank you, so would somebody like to make the model motion? Brazil, or supported by Noel, the motion is to approve purchase and equipping with license toolbox of a new. The motion is to approve purchase and equipping with license toolbox of a new twenty twenty four GMC twenty five hundred and a new twenty twenty four GMC fifteen hundred for the utility department not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand to waive bidding requirements due to the use of favored nations pricing.
I'm not making that word up. I am not making that.
Do we need any room and lights and a toolbox or is it already in there?
Just equipment.
I just said it. Yeah, I thought equipping with lighter and toolbox.
And then just say also known as my deal.
Yeah, thank you. You know what? We're gonna. I'm not, I'm gonna go with both your suggestions. Okay, um, calling the role Noel.
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway, absent Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brazil. Motion adopted, five zero. J two. You're up, Brandon.
Um, so when I first got hired, I might say that a few more times, uh, there was, it was known to me that previously an electric mower was brought to the board as well as probably a gas mower for you guys' decision on taking mowing over in the future. Um, it was tabled. Um, and then since we were working on the capital improvement, uh, it was brought up to me again to see if we would like to handle this internally. Um, I went and looked at the prices based on electric and gas mowing. Um, based on the little amount of mowing that we will be doing compared to a big business um and the cost of electric mower and the fact that um I don't think an eight hour battery um is gonna actually get us to what we need to do, especially seeing as how we won't be able to charge it during the nighttime, cause that would be ill advised. Uh, I can't justify making a recommendation of buying an electric mower. I think the cost um for that electric mower what uh is gonna outweigh um the actual carbon footprint that we'd be making. I know we have a sustainability goal, but I I just don't think it's a good recommendation for me to make based off of the use that we'll be using it for. Um, however, if the board, um after hearing this, wants to pursue that, that is totally fine. I don't have a problem getting those quotes rounded back up and re-proposing this. Um, but however, what I got proposed today is I went to Bullion and to Weingartz and I chose to pick out um two commercial grade low tier, which is the entry level commercial mower. And I also picked a high grade residential mower and got prices for those. And after looking at the prices and what we need and and talking with chief um and uh the prior parks director, Chris, um and myself, we concluded that the Skag mower was probably the ideal selection for us. It was in the middle price ground um compared to the other mowers. Uh, it does come with a three year warranty. Sourcewell bidding is a national bid. Um, a national bid process that is is used currently right now, so and not only did I get three quotes, but we also got the Sourcewell bidding for this specific unit, which brought it down two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars from the original price, which would bring the total to nine thousand eight hundred and fourteen. Um, including in this was also an offer for a trade in on our current mower, which is a two thousand and seven Hustler Raptor Zero Turn. Um, currently, it does not turn on. Um, it definitely needs a lot of maintenance and and TLC. Um, I don't think it's what we need going forward, so therefore I do think the thousand dollars for this instance is a good fair trade in value for it. That would bring our total down for the mower to eight thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And then part of the breakdown in cost is the addition of a three thousand dollar utility trailer. Um, I did get three quotes for like material and design of a utility trailer that was six by ten. So that our mower would securely set up on there and get secured with additional weed whips and gas cans and all that. Um, and based off of the designs and what we need, I selected the B and M utility trailer um for three thousand dollars. And as you can see, we uh already did the fiscal impact and broke down how this would be split amongst the different people that would be using it. Forty percent for utility, forty percent for park, ten percent for fire, and ten percent for building maintenance here at Saddle Township. Um, and that includes the zero turn in the trailer in that that breakdown.
And I would move to approve the purchase of the Skag Zero Turn mower and B N M X B M M six foot by ten foot utility trailer, splitting the cost between utilities, parks, fire, and building maintenance at a forty percent, forty percent, ten percent, and ten percent uh respectively as outlined in agenda item J two.
Second.
Motion by Riser, second by Brazil. Discussion. I just have proposed a friendly amendment to just add to the motion with source bill bidding in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Alright.
Accepted, accepted. Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? Okay, uh, call the role Noel. Yes. Riser?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Brazil? Motion adopted, five zero. Next up is J three Kennedy Industry Pump Maintenance. Brandon.
Um, was speaking to Rich when I got here. Um, a- as I do mention in here, I only got the one bid price for Kennedy Solutions. They are the premier contractor for pump maintenance work throughout Michigan. Um, back where I worked previous from here, we use Kennedy, even the same guys that showed up to help us at Walnut Ridge check valve replacement. We're the same guys I worked with. Um, and because of the work quality that they do, they get predominantly chosen to have uh maintenance done by them. And that's the only one I can comfortably recommend to the board. Um, with saying that, pump maintenance at our pump stations, our booster station uh stations is is definitely critical to the operation of our system. Without preventative maintenance being done, these these pumps may fail at any time or wear out untimely due to them not being properly maintained. Um, so therefore a maintenance contract, seeing as how we can't do this work in-house, is critical. Um, this was something that wasn't done for the past three years, but is standard. Um, and for that reason, I'm asking the board to approve uh Kennedy Solutions to begin a one year contract going forward for pump maintenance.
Why are you recommending one year, not longer?
Uh. That's just a when I ask for a contract, that's what I specified. Um, I guess I couldn't ask for a longer one. Um. I I don't have a good reason why I just chose one year. Um, I guess I was.
I just, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Point, I mean.
Yeah, you do make a good point.
Well, once at least we get a one year with an option to renew at the same price or something. If we agree or you can lock him into a three year at the same price, that way you don't have a price increase.
Understand.
So the, so the exchange for giving us a three year contract is you agree not to raise the price. That's the swap.
I don't know if they do that.
I don't know. I can certainly ask.
And I do not agree.
Um.
Your toast is critical. You gotta have it.
And if not, you know, if, you know, you can take a look at it and see if it works out. I don't know at this point.
Okay, I don't, I don't know how Kennedy works at all of you.
I'm okay with, I I think that's a good point too. Um, I was working on so many different things with the cap. I'm not trying to make excuses, but this is kind of what I went with. Um, but certainly I have no problem. We can table this for now. I do have other agenda items for the next board meeting. Um.
I don't wanna hold it up. I'm saying if if we need to do a little more research and could potentially get a better price.
Well, we could look at it. Yeah.
Okay.
Potentially lock them in for a three year term that could make make it a little bit better deal for us. Uh, it hasn't been done in three years, but if if I get to bring that, like I said, I do have other agenda items for the next meeting, so I don't think another two weeks is gonna matter um a whole lot.
Somebody like to offer a motion to table?
I'd go to postpone until our um April twenty third meeting.
There's a second question. What's the?
Oh, sorry.
There's a difference between tabling and postponing. Make sure we get the right.
I think table is seen A D M without a certain date, then you remove it from the table. Postponing is to a date certain. That's my understanding.
Okay, that, I couldn't remember. I know there's a difference. Okay.
So a motion by Riser, support by Noel to postpone J three until regular meeting of April twenty third. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion adopted. J four, purchase of metron meters. Brandon.
Um, previously we discussed um moving to doing a meter replacement program. Um, currently we have two hundred metron meters in the system right now. Um, part of the program lets me see how these meters are working in the field in real time. These give minute by minute updates. Currently, right now, uh, as I said, we have two hundred and four meters. All of them are reporting back. Um. And so I know spread out pretty good throughout the township, so I know that we got pretty good coverage with the Verizon wireless towers. Um, based off of the that data, I could, I could fairly say that oh, we should have very little issues at all with having um connection with Verizon. Um, and these are all just antennas that are based inside the houses or buildings currently. They do make um extended radio receivers that we can put on the outside of buildings if need be. Um, I don't really anticipate us needing to do that, but um if some reason that we can't pick up it from the inside, we can still put an antenna in the outside. So I do feel confident with the ability for us to read these going forward. Um, again, this was a transition that was made by prior utility director. I do support his movement, seeing how we had a lot of utility building issues due to the failing census MXUs on the outside of buildings. These MXUs were not available uh during COVID and still are very hard to come by due to um how they're made and the certain parts that they need. Um, so it was definitely vital for us to move to a different type of meter. Uh, moving to being able to get a smart meter and have a website that not only allows many advantages for me and my utilities department, but also helps the public out. Um, as they're allowed to uh look at their own individual meters and they can see how much bother they're using on a daily basis. They can set alerts to their cell phones or emails and learn if they have a leak or there's a lot, a lot of different capabilities with this meter. Um, I did use these in the city of Flint when I worked there. Um, they're easy to install, easy to maintain. Um, we didn't have too many issues with them. Um, all meters, I wanna warn you guys. All meters claim to be the best meters. Uh, there's no bulletproof answer. Um. The best way to do it is a call who actually has them in the system and try to do your due diligence the best that you can. Um, and I called the city of Flint again, just to verify that they're still happy with the meters. I called the city of Detroit. Uh, I didn't get an answer, but we did go to a meeting in Lansing and the actual meter specialist that runs that division, it's a whole different division. Um, she spoke highly of the metron meters and I called the name escapes me, but I called one more source that had a decent amount of metron meters and again, they were happy.
On the east side, if I remember my presentation.
Yes.
Or something over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um with that being said, I I do have faith that we're gonna get a good return on our investment with these meters. Um, I like the, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Quick question. Um, how long do you think, um, we got a five year period? How long do you project four hundred thousand will last? How much is kind of the total meter replacement project?
Yeah, the whole meter replacement project is for the current meters that we have on current accounts we have on hand is one point seven million dollars for just replacing the meters that we have in the system right now. The four hundred thousand dollars is comprised of three hundred thousand dollars worth of replacing meters in our system. Um, and taking out the old census meters. There's another hundred thousand dollars that I put in there because we have a lot of new bills coming in here that are gonna take up a lot of meters as well. So I put in a little bit of a buffer zone. Um, depending on how many we get to, you know, adequately replace on our own and how many are needed for the new constructions. Um, I believe I can manage this within four hundred thousand. Um, however, if we are really proactive and we do really good on our end as far as getting in in the houses and if people are responding to us, um, there may be, um, it may be a point in time where I come to Joyce and and get her support to ask for additional funds, but the additional funds would only I mean, again, it it's part of the whole capital fund that we improve, so it would, it would never exceed that amount.
It'll just be interesting to see what kind of pace you can have.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be really interesting. Um, I did get one quote for all the residential buildings to be uh contracted out and installed by a contractor. That was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and so that was quite a bit of money um in order to get those put in. And so I thought.
Didn't we already approve the overtime in your budget for your team to do it yourself?
Correct. Yeah, we did allocate some, some money in our account. I was just making a note that I did see what that that amount would be. And I think we could come under that amount.
Great. Any other questions from the board or are we ready to?
I'm ready, but I wanna ask you if we need to, if the model motion suffices with respect to particularity on where our funds comes from.
Yeah, could I suggest or?
I I moved the model motion to approve P O for the purchase of metron meters not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars without B O T approval subject to the friendly amendments that are forthcoming.
Is there a second? Support? Okay, support by Palmer, friendly amendments um to be uh strike without B O T approval and to say to be split evenly between the water and sewer funds, period. It will be without B O T approval because we're approving it tonight.
So the, these are water meters that comes out of sewer?
Water and sewer. It's split, it's split evenly.
Okay.
Between water and sewer funds.
With you. Thank you.
And I, and I just did the sewer fund because we do calculate our sewer usage for customers based off these meters.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the role. Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Brazil?
Yeah.
Motion adopted, five zero. Next up is J six Utilities Department G I S support, G I S data migration and water meter replacement program.
I, if I may, I think we let uh miss J five.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brandon. J five, New Jackson Road pump station generator.
Um, when I first got here, one of the first priorities was trying to figure out what we needed to do with the generator at the pump station. Currently, the generator is as old as, I mean, it's the original generator that is at that station. Uh, at some point in time, some things were changed at the pump station, which has now made this generator not fully capable of running all the pumps at the station as it is. Um, and so O H M myself um was tasked with trying to figure out the best solution for a generator size right now. And also trying to figure out when the expansion of the sewer station happens or the increasing of the wet well. Um, how is buying a generator not right now gonna accommodate when we do that expansion? So through talking to Cummings and Huron Valley in a meeting, um, we discussed the option of this three hundred kilowatt generator. This generator would replace the old one, of course. There is enough room that if and when the expansion to the pump station happens, this generator will be able to parallel to the next generator that will need to accommodate whatever the increased kilowatts an hour that we would need. So if the expansion happened and it was found, we found that we needed four hundred and fifty kilowatts, we'd buy another hundred and fifty kilowatt generator and parallel it to the three hundred. Now we have four hundred and fifty. So this was the best solution to accommodate the size that we need now and to also be able to connect to a different generator in the future when we needed to. Um, this uh in front of you today is to approve just the cost of the generator at ninety thou- ninety eight thousand two hundred and seventy-four. This money would not be spent this year. This is just to allocate the money in the P O so that um they know we got the money reserved for it. I will be able to get it on order. Um, it has taken about a year to get this generator in. The hopes is that we would be able to put this in in the springtime of twenty twenty-five.
That sounds great. I would just um suggest to the model motion that we would include as bid through Sourcewell contract and subject to township attorney approval, because this is a contract requiring kind of building, um, something that's a year out. Requires kind of building, um, something that's a year out. I'd like um township attorney approval. Um, are there other comments or questions?
If that's a motion, I would second it. If not, any motion, I would move the model motion with your uh appended uh phrase.
Okay, moved by risers. There's support.
Support.
Support by Brazil. Any other discussion? Uh, Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brazil? Motion adopted five zero. And now up is Jason's Utilities Department, G I S support.
You said that's the original generator in there. Oh, are we pushing? Are we pushing?
Um, G I S. So uh, there has been a lot of talk about G I S across all um of the departments, I believe. Um, currently, we do not have. As far as utilities goes, we don't have any of our own data um in our own cloud system. So. Part of this approval would to be able to transfer. The G I S information that O H M currently has on their own cloud server to our own cloud server. And um additionally, this also will approve. Us to create one of the first apps for utilities department. This app would be to. Basically have an overview of Silo Township's community. Um, and some way somehow we have to get down to the nitty gritty. Um, at every single house, I'll be able to change the color of the house. Um, and that way I'll be able to track what houses have not had meter replacements and what house has need replacements. I seen. Um, a preview of how this works through the city of Ann Arbor. Um. They are also doing meter replacement program and on top of that, they also incorporated with their service line change out. Which is much more extensive than what we'll be doing here, but. I seen the way that it works through Ann Arbor and it is definitely something that will be beneficial as us to have a heads up display. Um, so we can knock door to door or know exactly what houses to call on a map system instead of. Searching through paperwork and trying to figure it out. Um.
Stop right there, just in the interest of time, see if there's other questions or comments.
So this is a, this is G I S layers that's gonna help you plot out and better manage your work.
Correct.
And I'd say too, I'm noticing Chris has um recommended this and this is part of Chris's larger plan. So I have confidence in it. I also want to note, very importantly, for the first time ever. Silo Township will actually be in custody of our critical infrastructure related to utilities instead of having it.
Owning the data, forgetting it.
We already do. It's our data. We'll have it in our possession.
So then I would move to approve the proposal by O H M to rebuild and further develop. Uh, arc G I S online system and overall G I S infrastructure. Funds to come for fifty percent capital outlay sewer systems. G L five ninety dash zero 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 dash nine seven three point zero zero zero. And fifty percent capital outlay water system, G L five nine one dash zero 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 dash nine seven two dot zero zero.
Motion by risers, there's a second?
Sorry.
Second by Brazil, discussion. I would just note, I'm not sure that it should come from five ninety and five ninety one. I don't know what. Discussion has been on here, but I think this is kind of a broader um I T expense. That should be cost allocated through um.
I I'm open to a friendly, I'm open to an allocation instead of fifty percent.
I mean, I don't know.
My. Chris put this together.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Okay.
He prepared the item, so I'm thinking that he gave that consideration.
Okay, okay. Then I'll let it be.
Yeah, I would, I would second that side of it.
Okay. No, that's fine.
But there's certainly things going forward that will be paid for by different departments based on their needs.
Yeah, I do want to say though that I'd like to at least correct the account numbers if we keep the funds. They, because it can't come out of capital outlay. It's it's gonna be a contract.
Do I need to say the fund number subject to approval by our?
No, we can just correct it right here. Uh, we could just change it to. I mean, we we can honestly just say from sewer.
The numbers?
Five ninety zero 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 eight two three and five ninety one zero 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 eight two three. I just know it'll cause question for Rebecca. We put it into capital.
Okay.
Okay, that's friendly.
Other question?
Yep, uh Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Uh, motion adopted five O.
I just wanna really appreciate you guys supporting um and making the decision you guys did today. Uh, it's really gonna help out. So I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, next up is sale of township property at seventy nine seventy. West Liberty. There was handed out an additional um resolution at our tables today. And um, thank you um for being here.
Of course.
Um, I don't know where we want to start, Joyce?
Well, basically, um, the board authorized. Uh, the manager and the supervisor to work with Patrick and Paulie related to the sale of the property. Uh, on uh Liberty Road, seventy nine seventy West Liberty Road. Uh, Patrick has indicated we received two bids uh related to the purchase of the property. And um, I think I'll turn it over to him, have him talk about um what is being recommended and the rationale.
Okay, great. Patrick?
Yeah, so um, I guess maybe I'll just start with a little quick summary of, you know, kind of the activity. I mean, uh, we had, I I think I took more calls on this property than I've ever taken on any property I've ever listed. And this was probably, I think I sold five other houses since this was listed and. This definitely was double the calls I've taken on any of those properties. So it was pretty wild. Um, agents. Uh, lots of people from the public calling up the sign. Um. Uh, Will Hathaway sent some various people my way. Um, we had twenty nine showings total. Uh, there were another twenty five groups that came through the open house, which is pretty, pretty solid showing. Twenty nine showings and that basically let just under three week period between um. I think it was uh the fifteenth is when it went live. Open house was Sunday and then uh we basically called for offers to be due by uh April first. Just because uh we had to get everything ready for the meeting here. Um, so yeah, we generated uh two offers on the property. Um, I think the one we're recommending uh is clearly the superior one just on price and it also, I had. Quite a few conversations with the uh, so the. The buyer was initially going to just try to make an offer financed, but his agent who. He's also been a business partner with in the past on other properties has decided to help him finance it. So they're doing a cash sale. Um, she's also one of the purchasers and that's uh the contract you guys have before you.
So the, my understanding, the only contingency is here, I see some inspection, but that's the only contingency?
Uh, no, so there's a inspection contingency. Uh, which is on page, uh, let's see here. So there's the review of the well and septic. Uh, there's an attorney review of. Well, I guess the the contract, they have ten days attorney review of the contract and ten days attorney review of the title commitment. Uh, the bottom of page three, they have five business days for the inspection. And they were hoping to do that, I think, on Friday. So assuming this gets approved today.
Yeah, so only other question, I mean, is is there any reason why it's uh redacted that the uh buyer information is redacted? Is there any?
I mean, I.
That was my call.
Yeah, it was your call. Okay, got it. Uh, it's a full price off, right?
Full price offer, yeah, it's cash, cash and full price.
I would call this person full buyer offer. I mean, we can call that. I like that, so.
The one buyer two, the one buyer two is a, is a contractor and I know the uh, the agent who's also the buyer, she's. I, back when I was a contractor, we actually worked on one of her houses. She owned a big Victorian house in Ann Arbor that she had restored. So they've got, something they've got a lot of experience dealing with these types of properties. So it seems like a win win for everybody here.
So, I have a question and if you can't answer it or if it's not prudent to answer, I can appreciate that. But was the winning bid significantly more than the second place?
Yes, significantly more.
Oh, okay, okay.
Seventy five thousand one. And I, I appreciate the not wanting to kind of share uh purchase name. I think we wanna, you know, there's a. Policy interest to not, you know, discriminate everything, you know, knowing who it is, but I just want to verify our township attorney. We've looked at that, so that it's legitimate buyer, real person.
Yeah.
Okay, no concern.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any concern.
We had, you know, all the things we would normally look.
I was just gonna add too, I believe um the supervisor also sent a a letter. That was provided from the potential buyer.
Buyer.
Yeah.
Oh, their plans for the.
Their plans for the property.
And and we do have the um, we do have the well and septic approval. So that's nice. I'm.
Yeah, and I I sent that over to the uh, the agent this afternoon.
Great, great. Okay, are there any other questions, further discussion? Is somebody prepared to offer the resolution?
I am to authorize the township management to accept the attached offer on behalf of Silo Township. And work with this township attorney and Realtor to close the sale of the township owned historic farm at seventy nine seventy West Liberty.
John? If you'd be so kind to offer the resolution that was handed out tonight.
Okay, um. Do I read the whole thing or do I just move the model resolution?
E- either way, you can just reference the resolution to authorize the sale?
To authorize to accept the uh sale as as set forth in the uh attached resolution? That work?
Sure. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, offered by riser, support by Brazil.
Thank you, Jessica.
Sure, I just want to make sure we're authorized in the right language. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the role. Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Brazil?
Yeah.
Uh, resolution adopted five zero. Thank you for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And uh Joyce, um, make sure when you go, when you do sign the offer. Uh, line forty and forty one need to be both executed. Um, my brokerage requires that both.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for your work. Next up, we have um public comment. This is time for members of the public. Speak for up to three minutes. Um, I'd like to turn to any attendees on Zoom. Please raise your Zoom panic or if you're interested in speaking. Well, welcome to the attendance. Uh, first up is Rob, followed by Pam Boyd. Rob?
First of all, I hope everything is okay with Supervisor Hathaway's house. Let's hope that it's just a little thing and and nothing big. Um, tonight, uh, a- at the uh six o'clock meeting. I want to call, you're gonna want to write this down. I want to call your attention to section four point two, paragraph three. Section four point two, paragraph three. Uh, I believe that proves that Jillian is innocent. It it talks about how that um outlook. Account was open on that computer and there was no sign in. Um, so in my opinion, that's sort of the. Um, the nail in the coffin of this fiasco. Um, and Ian Hubert uh is a very tech savvy key witness in this whole fiasco. Uh, why was he never interviewed? I believe that was an opportunity missed. And then along those lines, um. Uh, I hope you all noticed how effective Ian was in five minutes of his public comment. Imagine if he had been sitting at the table and able to answer your questions. That's how a supervisor interested in the truth would have set up the meeting. Instead, we got a meeting. And investigation designed to fail. And on top of that. We had the township attorney implying the threat of calling the police on the very person directly damaged by this false accusation. This fiasco has been manipulated at every step. Um. You all need to open your eyes to that manipulation. Um. Uh, trustee Riser and trustee Brazil, um, I hope that this. Event has uh. Has opened your eyes. I know that trustee Noel and clerk Flintoff have the best interest of residents at heart. And I know that they pay attention. Um, I hope that this has, like I said, opened your eyes. Um. Uh, for the um. The uh. Uh, for the Gelman uh thing, um. Thank you Supervisor Hathaway for putting on next door. And then Roger Rail provided the link directly to uh the EPA comment page. I would suggest putting that link in the banner of the Silo website. So that um, it it alerts people that there's only like twenty five days left. Um, and will give them direct access to that link. That might be a way of helping to get more responses. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Pam Boyd. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Pam.
There we go. No problem. Um, I I too uh echo uh Rob's comment that I hope that. Uh supervisors ha- supervisor Hathaway's house um, um is not damaged that um. Everything is okay. Um, trustees Brazil and trustee Riser. I call upon you to hold Supervisor Hathaway. Um, in line when he is disrespectful to the women of this board. This has been going on since day one. Of uh about day one of the supervisor's tenure here. And I'm sick and tired of it. And I expect both of you. To hold him to be respectful to the women on this board. And I will call you guys out on it in the future if you don't. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Paula Globerson. Paula, you're on.
Yeah, Paula Globerson. Um, I liked uh John Risers uh apiary thing. And since he's on the planning commission, I uh, they're going to be having their sustainability. Uh, fair and they'll have native plants because I know people. They may not want to be involved with the township, but that do apiary and beehives and um. There's, that is a fabulous idea. I think that's great. And um. I want to say how we deal with incidents at the hospital. We have a thing called critical incidents. And when we have a critical incident, everybody who's been involved in whatever the incident is, it's usually a patient related. Uh, care thing. We have all of the parties get together and it 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 could also be a criminal thing. Uh, uh, nec- criminal negligence, et cetera. And we get together and have a. Uh, head on head and everybody gets to put their two cents in before calling in. Uh, different parties that may deal with the particular critical incident. And I think so much would have been avoided if that would have been done. And that, that is a much better way of dealing with it. And then um. On the Silo community news, there was a uh policy handbook. I think that's a great idea that we should have a policy. Handbook spelling out how different things should be dealt with. And then thirdly, I wanted to thank uh, uh, the utilities director. Uh, I'm all for sustainability, but sometimes uh electric this or that does not make sense. I'm a capitalist. And uh want to have good use. And um, I hope we can figure out a way to do the bus. I will not be taking the bus. I don't know if anybody's aware that there was a stabbing over on. Fuller on the A A T A. And I'm not sure we're gonna get the ridership back. However, sometimes that's the only ru- uh of available uh transportation to to people. And I think it's kind of uh something, even though uh. It could be expensive and could tailor it. And I'm glad you kind of waited to say, oh, we're gonna do. Uh, investigate it uh a little bit more. Uh, I think the taxpayers, when I read different things, they're looking for people, not just Silo, but. Ann Arbor, Washington, all over the state. They're looking at getting a lot of bang for our buck. And uh, there is a limit. Uh, I just watched the business channel again today. I watch it every day in Bloomberg. I do not think. Bloomberg. I do not think we're, we're, we may see CPIs and they're not even putting energy into CPI numbers. Uh, they're talking eight percent.
Paula.
Yeah, all right. Have a great night.
Thank you. Hey, thanks a lot, Paula. Appreciate it. Next up is Bob Walsh. Bob, you're on.
Good evening. I'll be short. I just want to thank trustee Riser as well for pulling together the Pollinator Project Proposal. Um, as a beekeeper, I endorse it. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much, Bob. Um, I see no other interested public. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Support.
Move by Brazil, support by Riser. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? None? Meeting is adjourned, ten eighteen.
Whoever votes that, that's gonna be, I'm just curious.
I have.
Really? What?
I had a very compelling reason.
Must have, must have missed that drop.